Chairman, we're all good. Thank you.
All right, everybody, let's get started then. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the October 16th, 2020 virtual meeting of the zoning board of appeals. As an introduction, my name is Timmy Knutson, and this is my first meeting of many to serve as the new chairman of the zoning board of appeals. My pronouns are he/him/his. I'm honored to have been appointed to chairman by Mayor Lori Lightfoot, after serving for the past year as the alternate member to the board. As a bit of personal background, I'm a partner at the law firm of Crook, Fairchild, Morgan &amp; Barris, focusing on corporate transactional matters, mainly with venture capital clients. Also, in my pro bono practice, I represent LGBTQ undocumented persons in applications for asylum. I'm an uncle, a Lincoln Park resident, and a tennis lover. The ZBA is a highly consequential and dynamic board. Here, we govern on matters that touch Chicagoans personally. Whether it's a nail salon, small business, a charitable service shelter, that home addition down the block, or a new local cannabis dispensary, it likely was approved by the ZBA. Therefore, I view it as my duty now to strive for equity in its broadest meaning, especially during this unique time where citizens from every corner of the ward, of every ward in Chicago, have been affected by the pandemic in different ways. For many applicants who appear in front of the ZBA, it's their first direct touch with government. We, as a board, have the goal to make this a positive and respectful touch, no matter the outcome. On the large, our board makeup is a new one, and between Sam Toya, Jolene Saul, and Zurich Esposito, we have a mix of expertise, including restaurants, communities, housing, and architecture. In addition, I would like to welcome our newest member, Brian Sanchez, who is a partner at the law firm Sanchez Daniels &amp; Hoffman. After being appointed by Mayor Lightfoot, Brian was confirmed onto the board by city council just over a week ago, and he is an exciting addition. I also expect that, as a litigator, Brian will assist me with a certain litigation skill set that I am ever so lacking. Brian, we are happy to have you. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank my predecessor, Farsin Prong, for setting a great precedent for me to build off of, and for patiently answering my questions during this fast transition. On that note, if everyone can have a little patience with me today as I get used to the process, I would greatly appreciate it. I know that some of you have been in front of our board tens, possibly hundreds of times, so feel free to correct me on the processes needed. Just do it politely with the understanding that I alone hold the power to push the mute button. Without further ado, let's start this October 16th, 2020 meeting of the zoning board of appeals. First, I'd like to take judicial notice of the fact that on September 18th, 2020, Governor Pritzker signed a disaster proclamation declaring all counties of the state of Illinois a disaster area due to the COVID-19 public health emergency. This disaster proclamation is in effect until October 18th, 2020. Thus, Section 71 of the Open Meetings Act has been met. Second, I am making a determination pursuant to Section 72 of the Open Meetings Act that an in-person meeting of the board is not practical or prudent. Similarly, I am also making a determination pursuant to Section 7E5 that because of the disaster declared by the governor, it is unfeasible for at least one member of the zoning board of appeals, or its chief administrative officer, or its chief legal officer, to be physically present at the meeting place, inasmuch as there is no physical meeting place. Third, this meeting will operate under the emergency rules governing the conduct of remote public board meetings and provisions for remote public participation, promulgated by my predecessor, which are posted to the board's website. I encourage everyone who frequently appears before the board to familiarize yourselves with these emergency rules, as we do not know how long the COVID-19 public health emergency will last. In line with these emergency rules, today's meeting of the zoning board of appeals is a virtual meeting that is being simulcast to the general public via live streaming. It is also being recorded. We have established these virtual hearings in keeping with the governor, the general assembly, the mayor, and city council's goal to continue government functions while maintaining transparency and public safety. But there are technical limitations to this format that we must collectively manage, particularly with respect to the presentation of new evidence during a hearing, the ability for applicants and objectors to resolve objections or amend proposals during the hearing, and the participation of large numbers of people. As a result, any material to be presented to the board, whether by applicants or members of the public, was required to be submitted in advance of the meeting. And in addition, everyone wishing to testify at today's hearing, whether on behalf of an applicant or an opposition, was required to register before today's meeting. For those who do not regularly appear before the board, I will go over a few things for those who will be participating today. We are operating under the emergency rules, so for all applicants, objectors, and their attorneys, if you do not send us your exhibits by cutoff date and time, you will not be able to reference them. Number two, all participants will be listed as attendees within the Zoom meeting until your matter is called. At that time, we will transfer you to becoming a panelist. There will be a short switch over where you will lose the feed, so don't be surprised by that. Number three, once you are set as a panelist, please present your case. Board staff will be presenting the PowerPoint exhibits for everyone as we normally do, so you will not need to manage sharing your screen. Number four, please be mindful of background noise and mute yourself when you are not speaking. Number five, in addition, please note that we have a court reporter preparing our records, so it is important that two people do not speak at the same time. You might see me muting someone if this happens. Number six, if you are an active participant in this meeting, please do not watch the live stream. This will cause audio interference. Let me repeat that. If you are an active participant in this meeting, please do not watch the live stream in tandem. Number seven, please make sure you identify yourself while you are speaking. This goes for attorneys, applicants, members of the public, and board commissioners. Since all of us are remote, we and our court reporters cannot always see who is talking at any given time. I will also be administering oaths for each witness individually to accommodate this. Number eight, if an applicant or anyone in opposition to the application has any technical issues presenting their case, and it's unable to proceed, we will attempt to continue the matter until the end of the call today to create time to resolve these issues. If unsuccessful, we will continue the matter until a subsequent meeting. Number nine, after your matter or matters are concluded, please leave the Zoom meeting. If you are interested in continuing to watch your meeting, which I hope you are, I encourage you to watch the live stream, which is accessible directly from our website. Now, I'd like to call the virtual meeting of the zoning board of appeals today to order. I will now take a roll call to establish quorum. Commissioners, after I call your name and you state that you are present, please verify that you can also hear and see me. Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes, I can hear and see you.
Thank you. Commissioner Esposito?
I'm here, and I can hear and see you.
Commissioner Toya?
I'm here, and I can see you.
And I am present as well, so quorum is established. The minutes of September 18th, 2020 meeting have been distributed. Unless there are corrections, I move that we approve the minutes as distributed. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
The minutes are approved. I now move that we approve today's agenda. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito? Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Today's agenda is now approved. To end this monologue, I'm going to skip my predecessor's regular general announcements and trust that the attorneys who frequently represent applicants before the board have read our latest updates to our regular rules that we made last month, and have downloaded our updated findings of fact forms for variations and cannabis special uses, as well as our updated cannabis affidavits. For those of you who haven't, everything can be found on our website, which is www.chicago.gov/zba. Now we can move on. I'll take requests for continuances, which I understand that we have a few of.
Mr. Chairman, this is Victor with the zoning board. On behalf of the attorney, Steve Friedley, we are requesting to continue cases 335, 336, 337, and 338. They were unable to get all their witnesses present today.
Okay. Okay, is anyone here to agree to a future date?
No, no one assigned in for this matter.
Okay, let's put them in December, which I believe Victor is...
The 16th, or the 18th, I'm sorry?
Yeah, it's December 18th.
Okay, 9:00 AM?
Yes, 9:00 AM, and just for the record, no further notice will be given. Let's do December 18th at 9:00 AM.
Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, any other continuances? I believe we have a few more. Is anyone here?
Attorney Placa, you can go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and we are welcoming you with open hearts and wish you the best of luck. My name is Agnes Placa. I'm one of the attorneys representing the applicant. This is page five. Two cases, 343-20S and 344-20Z. We are still working with the Department of Planning and Development on resolving some landscape review comments, and we do not object to continuance. Department asked us to continue the case to resolve all those issues.
Okay, thank you. Can we continue to December 18th as well?
Yes, that's acceptable. Thank you.
Okay, no further notice will be given, but we'll see you again on December 18th at 9:00 AM.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, if there's no further continuances, I'll give a few more seconds. Let's move on to the first matter, which is, we're taking things a little bit out of order, just so everyone knows to accommodate with work schedules. So the first matter we're going to be seeing today is matter 328-20Z. Mr. Walden, let me know when you are present.
I'm present, sir.
Great.
This is Jamil Walden, 5329 South Wall Bash.
All right, Mr. Walden, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your proceedings today?
I affirm.
Wonderful. So can you walk us through what's going on with your property?
Basically, I inherited this property. I'm trying to rehab it, and it has an addition that was built on there, probably, I remember it, probably back in the 70s, that it was only, I was just a kid. And the issue is the addition is not to require two feet off of the property line. There hadn't been any complaints, or any time the inspectors came out, it was never brought up, not to point fault or anything, but it seemed that there was an issue, it would have been brought up a long time ago. So I'm trying to rehab the building, and hopefully some other projects in the future. And that's the main issue there. It's already on the property line, and the additional garage is on the property line as well, so there's no access to the backyard, and I'm on a vacant lot next to me on the north side of the building. So it's already pre-existing construction there, and it would cost a fortune, estimated on the low end of $61,000 to demolish it, you know, and build it up. So I definitely can't afford that. It's the working guy.
Okay, yeah, so if we can go through the variations that you are requesting. You're requesting reduce nor setback from two feet to zero feet?
That's correct.
Okay, and as well as... So the south side setback will be at 5.33 feet, and this is for you to put up a two-story addition?
Actually, the two-story is already up.
Okay.
It's existing. The thing is, it's just not meeting the code, you know, that's current.
Yeah, okay, so that's to get into compliance, and then, so what type of work will you be doing?
It's basically your remodeling project.
That is correct. That's my architect, Mr. Jim Ollie.
Oh, great. Okay, Jim, will you please state your name, address, for the record, and your expertise?
James Ollie, Architect, 15751 South Ravinia Avenue, Orland Park, Illinois 60462.
Okay, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
I will.
Okay, I acknowledge your expertise. Yeah, so if you could walk us through the work being done, that would be great.
All right, if you go back to the site plan, you'll see that the the building, the subject building is existing, and it's on the property line, and it's been there prior to 1990. And my client, Jamil Walden, recalls it being there in the early 60s.
70s, yeah.
Okay, from that time forward, the building has been inspected by building inspectors over the years. We went back and we checked records before we started doing any construction documents. And at every inspection, while there were violations that were noted because of neighbor complaints or tenant complaints, there are never any violations or any list or any notice given to the owner of the property, or as of record, that indicates that the addition was built without a building permit. So there was never a violation to that extent, never any plans being requested. We didn't find out about it until we submitted our drawings. The building department had issued a building permit, with the exception of this addition, or this building addition, this existing building addition, and we're hoping that the zoning board of appeals will grant a reduction in the setback. The building itself, the existing addition, is right on the property line, and so is the existing addition, or the existing building. There is no way to easily demolish the addition. It's very expensive, and as Jamil mentioned, it would eliminate any possibilities for him to continue to remodel the building.
Okay, and sorry if Jamil already noted, but Jamil, do you live in the property, or do you rent it out?
I'm planning on renting it out.
Okay.
The building is existing and vacant.
That's correct.
And you wouldn't be able to rent it out as-is?
Oh, no. It's stripped to the bone now.
Okay. Okay, questions from the board?
Mr. Walden, this is Zurich Esposito. When did you inherit the property?
2014.
Okay, great, and it'll be three units down from four, correct?
That is correct.
Terrific, thank you. This is Commissioner Toya. I do have a question as well. Have you spoken to your neighbors on each side of you?
Yes, I have.
How do they feel? And how do they feel?
They have no problem. They're applauding me for doing something with the building. They're all, they're very involved with the neighborhood, so they're all on board.
And obviously, you've been in the neighborhood on and off since the early 70s, as you were insinuating.
Well, yeah, as a kid, yeah, yeah, I'm only 52, but my aunt, she was real estate, it was her building, so I've been going over there. Right.
Got it, got it. All right, thank you, Mr. Walden.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And just one more question so that we have it in our records. How did you value the demolition costs and seeing $60,000 in the application?
Well, I believe that Claybaker Jones, which I have to tell you is another company that I own, which is a general contracting and development entity that I have, I did an estimate of the job, and I honestly don't believe it was $61,000. I think it was more like $35,000 or $40,000. If I go back and I read the, if I went back and I checked the original costs. Now, that cost is kind of high, and the reason that it's high is that the demolition, there are two parts of it. The first part is just the normal demolition of the building from the ground up, which would read, there's no access to the building. You can't use the lot to the north. We don't know who owns that lot. There's some confusion about that. And there's no direct access to the rear of the building from the wall bash side. It's dumpster, it had to be placed on the wall bash side, and all the demolition would have to be with power and power tools, by hand, wheelbarreling. No heavy equipment makes it difficult. In addition to that, the foundations should be taken out entirely, only to prevent telegraphing of the foundation. He wants the weight of the building removed from the foundations themselves. So tenement arrives up, and if they rise up around the foundation in the center, there'll be a dip, and that'll create ice in the wintertime and ponding in the summertime. So the foundation should be taken out, even if it would reduce, even if we cut back the top 12 inches of the foundation, it would still telegraph. So I don't know where that, honestly, I didn't put into $61,000. I think it's more like $35,000, $25,000 to $35,000.
Good to know. I mean, we've got it on the record now that it's a significant demolition cost, and a lot needs to be done. So any other questions from the board? With none, we'll take this under consideration, and thank you for coming today.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, good luck. Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next up, we're going to go out of order again. We're going to move to matter 342-20Z at 719 North Elizabeth Street. Okay, great. I believe we have Mark Kupiak online as attorney. Are you there, Mark?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Is there a second attorney with you?
Yes, my associate attorney, Agnes Pleka, is also on the call.
Okay, great. And is the applicant present as well?
On behalf of the applicant, we've got Jimmy Lopez. Jimmy, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Good morning.
Good, and we should also have the project architect, John Hannah.
Okay, great.
I'm here.
Let me quick swear in Jimmy and John. Jimmy, could you give your name, address, and also say that you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Jimmy Lopez, 1457 North National, Chicago, Illinois, 60462 is my address.
Okay, great. And Mr. Hannah, let's swear you in now as well to get you on the record.
Okay.
Okay, can you say your name, address?
Yeah, John Hannah, president of Hanarchic Think, 180 West Westfield, Chicago, Illinois, licensed architect, state of Illinois.
Okay, wonderful. All right, great. Mark and Agnes, can you walk us through this matter?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Again, attorney Mark Kupiak, I am the attorney for the applicant. For what it's worth, my video is not showing up on the screen, but I certainly could see you and hear you very well, so I'll just continue.
We just seen part of you, just so you know.
All right, maybe it's my, oh, there, there, okay. Thank you. I represent the applicant, and as we just said, I have with me today on the call my associate attorney, Agnes Pleka, on behalf of the applicant, Jimmy Lopez, and the project architect, John Hannah. And the case, one case, a variation, and the purpose of the variation was to allow a security gate at the rear of the property. The particular hardship or unique circumstance we have is that this is a short lot, only 100 feet deep, substandard according to the code, standard being 125. So Mr. Hannah was not the original architect, but the original architect advised the applicant that he had difficulty in fitting a garage and rear yard open space and a trash enclosure, all in the rear setback, given the short lot. This particular case did involve a zoning change in order to build the building. Alderman Burnett asked the applicant to meet with the Eckerd Park Community Group. They were particularly concerned about the trash enclosure, because the alley at the rear of the property is only 13 feet wide, and they do have a problem with garbage cans in the alley blocking access. So they wanted to make sure that we had onsite trash enclosure, which we do according to that plan, and also reasonable access to that trash enclosure. So the plan, as done by the original architect, has the required five parking spaces for the five units, has the onsite trash enclosure, but they, along with the applicant, were also concerned about security in that neighborhood. So given the architect didn't have room to fit a garage to enclose the parking spaces, the solution was the security gate. And this way, we're able to satisfy the community group with respect to the trash enclosure and security, provide required parking spaces, and provide security for both the parking spaces and the building with that security gate at the rear of the property. And a little twist is, certainly in the rear setback, open parking spaces are permitted use, an enclosed garage is a permitted use, but for whatever reason, Section 309 that lists permitted obstructions in the rear setback does not list a security gate. So that's why we're before you asking for the variation to maintain it. Like to point out that this is a gate, a security grill. This is not a solid door, as you would see on a garage, but instead, kind of a see-through gate with metal slats, and Mr. Hannah will describe that a little bit better as I go on. So first witness, Jimmy Lopez, Jimmy, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
State your name and your address.
Jimmy Lopez, Jail Development, 1457 North National.
And Jimmy, is it true your LLC owns the subject property?
That's correct.
And you did need a zoning change in order to start this project, correct?
Yes, we did.
Alderman Burnett asked you to meet with the Eckerd Park Community Group?
Yes.
Which you did.
Multiple.
By explanation, accurate as far as the group's concern about trash enclosure and their concern about security?
That's correct.
And your original architect advised you not enough room back there for the garage, the open space, and the trash enclosure, correct?
Correct.
So the plan you showed Eckerd Park was this plan with a security gate.
Correct.
After Eckerd Park, Alderman Burnett had a larger community meeting that he attended?
That's correct.
And again, you showed him the same plan as shown with the open parking spaces with the gate?
Yes.
Now, Jimmy, you've developed in the city of Chicago before?
Yes.
And you're familiar with this neighborhood?
Yes.
And you do believe, in your opinion, that it is important that you have security at the rear of the property?
100%.
And you need security for both the parking spaces and for the building itself?
Correct.
A community group also concerned about security even for your adjacent neighbors if you were to have open parking without some sort of security gate?
That's correct.
So this was the best solution to address all the concerns that you and the community had with this project?
Yes.
Jimmy, is it true that you had signed an affidavit in connection with your testimony here today, and we submitted that on your behalf?
Yes.
And if I continue to question you, would your answers be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, unless you have questions, I think I would rest on Jimmy's affidavit. Uh, Mr. Chairman, unless you have questions, I think I would rest on Jimmy's affidavit.
No questions for me, Jimmy. You can, you can move on. Oh, sorry.
I just had a question. Um, wh- what is the, uh, the security concern that you have? Could you describe it more?
Jimmy, would you address that?
Yes, uh, well, the first off, the neighborhood, you know, people breaking into the cars, it's happened, it happens a lot. And, um, from, I mean, pretty much everybody wants some kind of security, just to park your car there. It's, uh, it's not the greatest right now.
Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I would like to mention, um, I neglected to mention that I believe we also have Laura Ronaldo on the call. Laura, are you on the call? Maybe not. Uh, Jimmy has a real, realtor in the neighborhood.
I'm here.
Okay, good, Laura.
Okay.
Okay, Laura, for, would you state your name, address, please?
Yes, Laura Ronaldo, managing broker, The Rent Doctor. And I live at eight thirty-nine North Marshfield, which is very close to the subject property, actually.
Okay, um, do you swear to tell the truth today, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Great.
Uh, Laura, uh, state again your name and your address?
Laura Ronaldo, eight thirty-nine North Marshfield.
Good. And Laura, you're a real estate agent?
Yes, I'm a managing broker. I own my own business.
Good. And Jimmy consulted you regarding this project?
He has, yes.
And specifically asked you your opinion about security, the security gate to provide security for this particular property?
Yes, and I live nearby and it's, it's imperative to have security. There's been a lot of actually shootings about four blocks away from here at Noble and Huron. There's been a lot of activity even the last forty-eight hours. So it's important to have security on these small narrow, um, back alleys and just in general, if there's not going to be any type of fencing in the back, then the entire building will have access to the doors, the public way. It's just, it's very important.
Good. So Laura, for the, for the occupants who'll be liv- looking to live in this property, when, when they look at this property, they would be looking for adequate security. Is that correct?
Yes, hundred percent.
And these units would be difficult to rent or sell if you, if they thought that the security was not adequate at the rear of the property?
Correct.
So in your opinion, seems that the security gate at the rear is a good solution for this particular problem?
Yes.
But that's all I have of Laura, unless there's questions?
Yeah, um, so Laura, and I'm gonna ask, uh, Mr. Hannah a bit more about the appearance of the gates, but there's a note in the application that, um, without the variation, the rate of return could decrease from eight point seven percent to two point four. That seems like a big difference. So if, can you walk us through that?
Mr. Chairman, rate of return, Jimmy perhaps would be best, uh, be- because he did that particular calculation?
Okay, if Jimmy's on, we'll wait for him then. Yeah, go ahead.
Jimmy, are you there?
Uh, yes, I don't have, uh, the pit board in front of me.
All right, but Jimmy, do you recall in your affidavit, though, you did, based on your calculation, calculate an expected rate of return of nine percent if you're able to rent these units with the security gate. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And your concern was without a security, security gate, that you'd have to rent them for a lower rent because they would be less desirable?
Totally, totally.
Good. So the nine percent return was based on a reasonable market rent as you would expect in that neighborhood? And the three percent return that you calculated was based on a lower rent that you'd be forced to charge without the security gate, which would make it a less desirable property?
That's correct.
And I think Laura could perhaps weigh in on that, that the, the rentals would in fact be less with, uh, without the security gate?
The, the parking in general around here is between roughly two fifty to three hundred per spot. So if you were just the layman that needed one parking spot, that's what you would pay. The other thing is this property, I'm actually at the property right now, is so close to the highway. So there's a lot of crime that happens right off the highway exits because you can come in the neighborhood, do what you want to do and then just get right back on the highway. So it really is imperative to have that security for your property. And what he's building is a luxury, high-end development. So the person that is going to be his customer is going to demand that at a minimum to have a secured parking space. They would prefer a garage. So whatever numbers that are put together, that's where he's coming with his figures. Because there is a premium that people will pay and expect at this level of construction that he does.
And you do agree with his opinion that he would expect to charge a lower rent, have to charge a lower rent to rent these units without the security gate?
Yeah, you would have to. And it would be difficult because they're large units. So somebody in those units is going to have a car, most likely a higher-end car. So they're going to want it protected and that's what they will expect and pay the premium for.
Good, thank you.
All right, counselor, you can, you can keep going.
Okay, next witness, John Hannah. John, would you state your name and your address?
Uh, sure. John Hannah, president of Architects, Han Architects Inc., one eighty West Washington, Chicago, licensed architect, state of Illinois, and I do swear.
Okay, thank you, John. And at this point in the proceeding, you're the project architect going forward?
I am.
Good. And would you just briefly describe the project, John?
Uh, sure. It's a five, five-unit building, five parking spots, uh, all masonry building, uh, with the, with the roof deck. Um, and they're more, more on the luxury end of, of the apartment, uh, scale.
Good. And John, your current plan follows the, uh, the plan that was attached to and adopted with the type one zoning change?
Uh, that's correct.
And those plans have the same security gate at the rear of the property?
They do.
And John, would you, for the board's sake, would you describe the security gate as far as the, the materials and the style?
Uh, sure, uh, you, you know, you'll see, uh, uh, rolling grills like this, that, you know, rolling grill slash gate on higher-end stores on Michigan Avenue where you, where you can still see through them. I think we attached a couple sample photos in the file of a couple of projects, um, in the neighborhood at, I think, seven twenty-eight, maybe North Eight and maybe seven thirty North Eighta. And you'll see, uh, uh, they probably have, um, eighty percent, seventy to eighty percent transparency. So you can see what's going on behind them. It's just not a flat, ugly door. These are, it's made of high-quality stainless steel, uh, and they, and they look quite nice.
Good. And John, uh, do you agree with my representation, uh, the unique circumstance here is the short lot?
Oh, it's true. Uh, we, we tried to fit a garage on there, uh, and we couldn't without, uh, putting, losing the open space and, uh, you know, one of the, one of the requirements of neighborhood group was to have that open space, uh, per code.
And the trash, onsite trash enclosure?
Of course, the onsite trash enclosure, yes.
Good. And John, you mentioned that, uh, riding around the neighborhood, you did in fact see other buildings in the neighborhood with a similar security gate at the rear of the property?
Oh, uh, we did see, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd say we did submit pictures with, uh, addresses of those two other buildings. Uh, so John, based on your observation of neighborhood, is it true to say in your opinion that this variation, if granted, would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood?
Uh, it will not alter the essential, essential character of the neighborhood.
Uh, John, did you sign an affidavit in connection with your testimony here today?
I did.
If I continue to question you, would you testify consistent with that affidavit?
I would.
Mr. Chairman, unless, unless there's questions, I think I would rest on Mr. Hannah's affidavit.
Yep, great. Um, and Mr. Hannah, you brought up the neighborhood group. Did you talk to the neighborhood group about this project?
Not on this project, no, but we do, we do, uh, multiple buildings in this, in this neighborhood and they pretty much always have the same questions and comments.
All right, um, I acknowledge your expertise. Um, questions from the board to Mr. Hannah? All right, if none, Mark, you should go on.
Okay, well, I think that's, uh, that's my testimony. And again, the building itself complies with, uh, with all the bulk requirements of the zoning code, not asking for any relief for the building itself. Unique circumstance is that, is that short lot? I think Jimmy would be, would have been happy to fit a garage back there for the reasons that Laura mentioned that, uh, the people would prefer it. But again, Alderman Burnett had this community process and when you go through the community process, the community has concerns and they expect you to make a reasonable effort to address them. So we have to provide one-to-one parking, which we do. Because of the narrow alley, they were very concerned about their trash enclosure. So we've got a nice space for it with reasonable access. So it's reasonable that the people will use the trash enclosure onsite. And then we're at this particular location, proximity to the highway, as Laura mentioned, uh, the security will be a concern. Again, and this is not for Jimmy as a developer, but for the occupants who will live there. I mean, city, uh, city living being what it is, you've got to be conscious of the security. So the fence is a nice solution because we address all the concerns of both the community group, the developer and looking forward to the occupants who will live there. So we think it's a, a nice overall solution. And at this point, the proceedings, because of the long community process, uh, zoning change, type one application, I mean, this is the plan that has been presented all along the way. So, uh, we're at this point, kind of, uh, stuck with the plan so to say, but it is a good one, we think.
Okay, great. Um, one, one more note comes to mind in regards to the gate. Um, and this is for Jimmy. Jimmy, there, would you be okay with us conditioning this upon the gate being see-through?
Sure.
Okay.
That's what it's gonna be?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Any other questions from the board? It sounds like none. We'll, um, take this under consideration. Thanks for coming in, Jimmy.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, we're now gonna hop around again, but we're gonna go to matter three forty-five twenty S. And that's at fifty-three oh eight West Belmont Avenue. All right, this one is Mark and Agnes as well, it looks like.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mark, Mark Kupiak here. I am the attorney for the applicant. And as you mentioned, on the call, I have my associate attorney, Agnes Pleka. On behalf of the applicant, I have Neil Shaw. I also have, as part of the team, uh, on behalf of the architectural firm, I've got Mario Va- Valentini, architect, and also our, uh, expert witness, our M A I appraiser, Joe Ryan.
We can, uh, we can swear them in each individually as you get to them. Okay, you can, you can go ahead.
Good. Uh, so we've got one case here and it is a special use to establish a single-lane drive-through to serve a proposed Taco Bell restaurant. And I would note just for the, the board's sake, subject property is in a C one, C one district. It's a commercial district. So certainly the restaurant itself is clearly a permitted use in that district. We're before the board here only because of the drive-through facility. And any B O C district, special use for the drive-through, uh, uh, and I think that's, uh, a little, a little introduction. I would say that as we'll get into this particular case, of the team, especially the architect, did work with staff from the planning department. Comments from the planning department, the plan, site plan has changed over time to the, to the one that is before you today. So we did make some changes and suggestions to staff, response to staff comments. They have suggested we also talked to the Department of Transportation, C dot. And the architect also made some revisions of the plan with respect to the driveways, number, location, width of the driveways. And we did have an email from C dot approving the site plan that's before you today. Uh, during this process, we did contact and stay in touch with the local alderman. That alderman was Alderman Rabois. And he did submit his letter of support. And we also did reach out to the community. Uh, this, uh, subject property is in the Belmont Central, uh, neighborhood of Chicago, the Belmont Central Shopping Area. So we reached out to the Belmont Central Chamber of Commerce. Subject property right now was formerly a medical center. In that building, um.
I apologize. I apologize, chairman. Uh, this is the court reporter. There's some background noise. If, if someone's not talking, can you please mute?
Yeah, for the witnesses, if you can please mute while you're not talking, that would be helpful. Mark, you, you don't have to mute. Yeah, Mark, I think you're muted if you're trying to talk.
Is that better?
Yep, yep.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, so then I was going to mention on behalf of the Belmont Central Chamber, uh, this property formerly was used by a medical center, medical clinic. Uh, there still is a building on the property. That building is vacant now. It's been vacant for some time. Uh, as we talked to the chamber, the chamber, of course, is always interested in empty vacant storefronts in the neighborhood. It's an older, older shopping strip area over there, especially concerned now with the pandemic and the virus and, uh, businesses going out of business. So they're very conscious of empty storefronts. Uh, they were actually pleased to see that the property was being redeveloped and, uh, the Chamber of Commerce did give us their letter of support also. So we did reach out to the, uh, to the community. So with that, I think as my first witness, I would call Neil Shaw. Neil, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Neil, would you please state your name and your business address?
Sure, uh, my name is, uh, Neil Shaw, uh, and the business address is five three oh eight West Belmont Avenue.
Good. And Neil, uh, what is your, uh, what is your position?
First, Mark, can I swear in quickly, please? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth today?
Yes, affirmed.
Great, thank you.
Good. Neil, what's your, what's your position in the company?
I am the, uh, president of A G Bells, uh, two LLC, uh, which is an owner-operator of, uh, forty-seven Taco Bells in the Chicago area.
Okay. Uh, and Neil, true, many of those, many of those Taco Bells that you just referenced have a drive-through facility, a drive-through lane?
Yes, uh, forty-three out of the forty-seven have, uh, drive-through lanes.
Good. Um, uh, and Neil, do, uh, do you also operate, uh, some restaurants outside the Chicago area?
We do. Uh, we have Taco Bells in, uh, Ohio, Ohio and, um, our partner brands, uh, Burger King, Church's Chicken and Little Caesars in, in other parts of the country.
So you've got experience with these restaurants with a drive-through lane?
Yes.
Neil, is it true that, uh, your applicant LLC has a contract to purchase the subject property?
Yes.
Uh, and we're talking about fifty-three oh eight West Belmont, correct?
Yes.
And the plan is to demolish the existing building and build a new building for a Taco Bell restaurant with this drive-through facility?
Yes, that is correct.
Um, Neil, the drive, the drive-through facility allows your customers to, uh, purchase their food, pick up the food with, uh, driving through the drive-through lane without the need to get out of their car. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So it makes it convenient for them to have the drive-through lane?
Yes.
So based on that, is your opinion that a special use for this drive-through is in the interest of public convenience?
Uh, yes, absolutely. Uh, o- o- over eighty percent of our business comes through the drive-through, uh, when dining rooms are open. And right now during COVID, it's, it's a hundred percent of our business.
Good. So obviously the drive-through facility is, uh, is important to your business model?
Yes.
And you'd actually not be able to go through with this project without permission to have the drive-through lane?
Yes, that is correct.
Good. Neil, is it correct that you, uh, the applicant has hired an architectural firm to do plans for this project?
Yes.
Yes, and those plans have been submitted with our application.
Yes.
Uh, and Neil, with respect to operations, if, uh, if we're given permission for the drive-through lane, uh, what hours of operation would you envision for the drive-through lane?
Uh, we usually follow Taco Bell's, uh, standard, which on, uh, the weekdays is anywhere from midnight to two AM and on the weekends, uh, for two AM to four AM, uh, but we are, uh, flexible on that.
Okay, well, those would be the outs- Okay. Well, those would be the outside hours.
Correct.
Nothing later than that. Good. Neil, is it true that you had signed an affidavit in connection with this case here today that we filed on your behalf?
Yes.
And Neil, if I continue to question you, would your answers be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes.
So Mr. Chairman, actually, if, if, if we can, I'd rest on Neil's affidavit unless you had some specific questions.
Let's, let's keep going and we'll do questions all at the end.
Next, I called Mario Valentini. Mario, are you on? Mario. Mario, can you hear me?
Sorry, I had unmute myself.
All right, that's fine. No problem, no problem. Mario, and would you state your name and your business address?
Mario Valentini, Principal of MRV Architects, fifty-one oh five Tollview Drive in Rawling Meadows.
Mario, do you, Mario, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
And Mario, is it correct that your architectural firm are the projects architect for this project?
Yes, that is.
And Mario, would you briefly walk us through the site plan?
Sure.
For the project?
Sure. So the project being on the northwest corner of Lockwood Avenue in Belmont. Drive-through facilities always have to have a counterclockwise configuration to operate the drive-through. We'd like to put the parking, obviously, on the main entry side of the building, which we have. We have, as Mark had said, we had really good discussions with zoning staff. C D, C dot staff, and it come to really what looks like and works as a very well set up site plan. Site is a little smaller than, you know, usual, but again, we, we can easily accommodate what's necessary to allow this facility to function properly. Traffic coming in off of Belmont, have the easy ability to get into the parking spaces, continue to the back of the lot to start queuing into the drive-through if they choose. Traffic coming in off of Lockwood, same thing, two-directionals for the ability to, to create that that, that traffic pattern that isn't gonna kind of be congested anywhere. That said, we also, with this, this lot being, giving us the ability to do so. We create what call, what's called a bypass lane. It happens, right? You're in a drive-through situation. You've, you've ordered, and unfortunately you have to leave. Maybe you left your money at home or whatever the case is, right? So you, you can get yourself out of the line and then continue on and exit onto Belmont Avenue if needed, so that you're not waiting through the line and, and congesting the drive-through lane. So that said, the operation of the drive-through is, this is pretty standard. We've got many locations like this in the Chicagoland. It's specifically in Chicago, but in the Chicagoland area. As you can see, we've met all the requirements of landscaping. This being an undeveloped property for quite some time now. Where, where the, the owners are spending a considerable amount of money to improve the site. And, and provide the necessary accommodations for the building, landscaping, and site work. And again, we've got easy, very easy access for pedestrians, whether they be pedestrians from Belmont or Lockwood, to be able to get into the building very easily, ADA complacency, it's not an issue. And, and obviously patrons that want to park can easily get into the building and not have to cross the drive-through lane to do that. So safety is, was, was a big factor in trying to lay the site out. We feel we've accommodated that, and we appreciate the opportunity to, to bring this to your attention.
Good, thank you, Mario.
Mario, one second. Mario, while we have this in front of us, it looks like there's space for, it looks like eight cars to be stacked in the drive-through.
Yes.
Do you think that's, that's sufficient not to create additional traffic on the Lockwood? I'm seeing that like if the, if it got to ten cars, this might push out on the Lockwood.
Yeah, we, we feel comfortable that it's, it's consistent with what we're finding in many locations for, for a Chicago project. So eight-car stack, speed of service. As, as Neil had mentioned, you know, they know how to operate these locations, they know how to operate them well. Their speed of service will get people in and out in an orderly fashion without any concerns.
Thank you.
And Mario, is it true, as I said from the original plan, that you did make some revisions to the plan in response to comments from the Department of Planning?
Yes, we did.
Good. And they are incorporated with that site plan before the board here today?
Correct.
And also a planning suggestion, did work with the Department of Transportation, specifically with those driveways, and did make some modifications based on C dot comments also.
Yes, we did.
And we did have an email from C dot supporting and approving this site plan.
Yes.
Good. So Mario, based on the foregoing, is it your opinion that the special use complies with all applicable standards of the zoning ordinance?
Yes, it does.
Good. Also true that this special use of this location is compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of site planning and building scale and project design?
Absolutely.
Also, your opinion that the special use of this location is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort?
Yes, it does.
Also true, you signed an affidavit in connection with this testimony here today?
Yes, I did.
And if I continue to question you, would your answers be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes, it would.
Thank you. That's all I have of Mario unless there's further questions.
Yeah, yeah, Mark, um, yeah, let's keep it moving. Let's get the other witnesses on, and then we'll go to the board for general questions.
Good. Next, and last, our MAI Appraiser Joe Ryan. Joe, you there?
I am.
Joe, would you state your name and your address?
Joseph Ryan. Address ninety-four fifty-five South Hoynes Avenue, Chicago, Illinois. I'm President of LaSalle Appraisal Group.
Mr. Ryan, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
I do, Chairman.
Great. We acknowledge your expertise. Go ahead.
Thank you.
And Joe, did you do a report in connection with your testimony here today?
I did.
And that report has your credentials and resume in it?
It does.
Mr. Chairman, we did file that report previously. Joe, are you familiar with the subject property and the surrounding neighborhood?
I am.
And you're familiar with the proposed use, the special use for the drive-through lane facility?
Yes.
And Joe, in your opinion, does this project comply with all applicable standards of the zoning ordinance?
Yes, in my report, I examined each of the criteria for the board to grant a special use, and yes, it did meet all of those criteria.
And Joe, is it your opinion that the special use of this location will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood or the community?
No, it will not.
Hey, Mark, we can, we can just do the short version on getting the standards in.
Good. And Joe, you, if I continue to question you, would your testimony be consistent with the report that we filed with the board?
It would.
Good. I think I rest on that, Mr. Chairman, unless there's questions?
I think you've got one more witness, right?
No, I think.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. Yeah, let's move. Questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So go a little deeper with me, because you said the hours on weekday could be anywhere closing time through the drive-through, twelve AM to two AM. And then on the weekends, two AM to four AM. Obviously, you, you know, you said you talked with the Belmont Central Group over there. Lockwood is a side street. It's not a commercial street. You'll be using that. There is a lot of residents, right? If I'm correct, let me think about this. So going going north is Melrose. So the street behind the place is, is Melrose. Did you talk to the neighbors about these hours? Because four AM, two AM, it seems pretty late. It is a very, it is a commercial street. You're absolutely right. But it's a very residential, single-family home area. So I just wonder if we've talked to the community groups, and also I know this part of town, you're, you're in the thirtieth ward, but right across the street is the thirty-sixth ward. This is an area where you got, you know, a couple of different aldermen representing Belmont Craigan on the south side of Belmont, but on the north side of Belmont is the thirtieth ward, and that's Portage, beginning of Portage Park. So could you go a little bit deeper on that with me, please?
And Neil, are you still on the call?
Yes, I am. So yes, we have talked to the community, and when we met with the alderman as well, we did mention we are flexible on those hours. We go by the standard that Taco Bell provides, but obviously want to be respectful and tied into whatever community we're in. So, you know, I think on our application, we either put midnight or, or one AM for weekdays and, and one or two AM for for the weekends. And so we're willing to address that based on community feedback and the demands of, of of our guests, which are mainly from, you know, the local community. So we're happy to, we're happy to comply with any needs related to that.
Yeah, like I said, so you met with the alderman. I know you're in the thirtieth ward, but literally across the street is the thirty-sixth ward. So you know, I, I, it's just one of those areas where, you know, the ward is cut in the two. You know, like I said, literally across the street is the thirty-sixth ward. So obviously you met with the thirtieth ward alderman and probably did not meet with the thirty-sixth ward alderman. So I was just wondering what his constituents was thinking about the hours of the drive-through. Also, I know that Taco Bell does apply for liquor licenses at some of their locations now. Is this one that you would think to do that or no?
No, we would not apply for a liquor license here. We only do liquor licenses where we do not have a drive-through.
Okay.
To draw the line there. So we would not apply for a liquor license here.
Okay. All right. So again, you met, so you said you talked with the alderman, and you got in your application, twelve to one or one to two, depending on weekday, weekend. Did you talk to the neighborhood groups besides the alderman?
Mr. Toy, if I could, Neil, Mark Kupiak, attorney here. Mr. Toy, in response to similar questions, I understand what, what, what you're asking. I would point out.
I know you do. I know you do.
I would point out, we do have an alley immediately next north of the property.
Yes, you do.
Alley serves as a, as a buffer there with, between the property and the residential to the north.
Yeah, but there's right on, right on the other side of the alley is a piece of property. I think it's like a six-flat building if I'm, if I'm right about that. But yes, but right on the other side of the alley, there is, you know, there's a, that's a rental property, if I remember correctly, too.
I, I think, I think you're correct. But as Mario.
Pretty sure I'm correct.
Mario, I, I don't doubt it. That Mario would explain that actually, the way it's designed, the, the primary entrance and exit is on Belmont. We've got two drive, two driveways on Belmont, which we anticipate would be the primary entrance and exit. So because we're primarily using Belmont, we are further shielded from that residential to the north. And I'll ask Mario to expand on that just a little bit. With respect to that community process, I'd also mention that the local newspaper, the Nading newspapers also did a story about this particular project, and I did speak to Brian Nading. And no negative feedback before or after the story. With respect to the community. We did not have any negative feedback. Actually, all the feedback was positive about developing.
No, no, no. And I'm sure, you know, this is a very, yeah, it's a mixed neighborhood. You got, you know, there's, you do have a lot of Latino Mexicans that live in this neighborhood. Not sure they read that. I know the old-time residents probably read that newspaper. Not sure the Latino Mexican community reads that newspaper in that area. So I, I'm sure, like I said, I'm sure the old-time residents do read that newspaper. So I'm glad you brought that up, but I'm not sure it's a newspaper that's read by the whole community.
I understood. That was only part of the process.
No, I'm just, I just, I'm just trying to educate Chairman and my other colleagues as well about that neighborhood as we move forward. So go on.
With respect to telephone calls, of course, we did our required mailing. We did have one phone call from a Polish lady who lives across the street. There's a little, little snack shop there with an Eastern European menu. Her question was what type of restaurant was coming in here and whether their menu would conflict with the Eastern European menu of the snack shop across the street. We explained to her that it was a Taco Bell, and they'd have their traditional Taco Bell menu. Other than that, the phone calls we had was, we had a phone call from the alderman's office. Some neighbors were complaining because the building on the property is vacant. Apparently, there was some homeless man sleeping in the vestibule. And we promptly notified the seller, because we've got a contract to purchase, to, to address that particular concern. And interesting enough, when we spoke with Belmont Central, who was very familiar with the site. They know that this was formerly used as a medical center. And interesting enough, there's actually a new medical center that just opened up on Belmont, just west of, west of Central. So when I spoke to Reed there, his, his concern was not much demand for another medical center where we are. So he was, the redevelopment, because they're very conscious of vacant storefronts. And he also.
Right. Yeah, keep going.
He had complaints, again, about that homeless man sleeping in the vestibule. So these were the limited complaints that, that we had in response to it. And again, I think Mario could address a little bit better how we anticipate the access and how the customers would use those driveways on Belmont. So if I could go back to Mario, Mario, are you there?
Yes.
How do you envision the access to the property?
Well, I, I feel the majority of the access is definitely going to come from Belmont Avenue. And the residents to the north across the alley, I believe all of those are single-family homes that have garages that back up to that alley.
All of them?
I'm pretty sure most of them, yes.
I thought one was a.
There's a, there's a photograph that will show, that photograph there on the left or here, where you can see that they're single-family homes.
Yes, the neighborhood is predominantly single-family homes. Yes.
So, so the good news is, is that the, the main residence buildings are a little further away from our site also. We've tried to, we tried to be cognizant of, trying to create some buffers for light and sound. We've got a, a six-foot-tall cedar board-on-board fence along the rear property line to help screen things like headlights and, and try and buffer some of the noise. The speaker post for a menu board system of this type has the ability to control volume. So that when, you know, if, you know, it's, it's, it's a lot easier to have that adjustment for multiple reasons. You don't want street noise to create any interference with the communications. But obviously, towards the later evenings, when the, when that street noise is, is at a minimum, the volume can then be kind of toned down a little bit so that the speaker post isn't so loud. And you can still be able to hear people making, and giving their orders. And then that said, obviously, as they pull forward, the actual window faces the west, which is the commercial property, and the transaction is done through the window without speaker or, or anything of the sort. So we feel comfortable that, again, yes, a majority of the traffic will be coming from the Belmont Avenue apron. The, the Lockwood Avenue is going to be used a little bit less. But that said, it's obviously needed for, during the day, for deliveries, trash pickup, or mostly deliveries, obviously. Trash pickup is from the alley. So. We feel comfortable.
Can you expand a bit on what you started to do, so on why the Lockwood Avenue entrance is necessary, being a residential street? I can see this working pretty well, just pushing all the traffic in and out of Belmont.
Yeah, the, the Lockwood apron is necessary, well, honestly, just so that there's a little bit less congestion. When we were going through the process with C dot and planning and zoning, we had a little bit of a restriction that needed to be put in place for that Belmont apron. It's a little bit more narrow than we, than we would have liked. And the reason is because the two aprons now are new. So the exit from the drive-through lane and the entrance. So the exit from the drive-through lane and the, uh, entrance off of Belmont are new aprons to Belmont. That said, uh, it, it, we're just kind of making sure we disrupt the parking situation along Belmont with a, a little less, uh, than, than normal. So the apron off of Lockwood would give us that opportunity in the event that, uh, patrons are parking and they want to be able to get off on the Lockwood and avoid, uh, Belmont. It, it just helps the, uh, ability for us to avoid a little bit of congestion, uh, on Belmont. At, at, there's points during the day on Belmont where it gets, um, a little bit congested. And we want to be able to make sure that people can get off the property and not have a situation where there's a bottleneck somewhere, uh, and that apron and Lockwood provides that. And it doesn't give us a situation where we, uh, we needed the parking. The parking is adequate for, for what we have for the building. And then obviously, uh, you know, there's, 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 there's street parking that the city of Chicago typically, uh, you know, expects, um, you know, businesses to utilize the street parking, uh, as needed. That's why we feel the aprons are adequate.
Eric?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could, just one follow-up with Mario. Mario, are you still there?
Yes.
Mario, is it true that the last use of this property, we've been advised was a medical center building with a parking lot?
Yes.
And the parking lot obviously still there, correct?
Correct.
And is it true that that parking lot had two driveways and both driveways were on Lockwood?
Correct.
So with your plan, we're actually getting rid of one of the existing driveways on Lockwood and preserving only one driveway on Lockwood?
That's correct.
So that, from that perspective, we're an improvement there as far as eliminating one of the driveways on Lockwood?
Correct.
But, but Counselor, um, in my opinion, in my opinion, uh, Taco Bell would probably generate more traffic than a medical center. So let's keep that in mind as well.
Okay.
I mean, I, I, you're, you're, you're pointing that out, but I, medical center, you know, getting a few people an hour, you know, Taco Bell could be pretty busy, you know, pretty busy. I mean, you know, you do have a, uh, you know, you have a nightclub over there on Belmont and Central, right on Central, 3100 block. So it's, it's, it's a pretty active, you'll, you'll get some business. I mean, that's obviously why they want to stay open to 1:00 AM on the weekends. So, you know, Belmont Central is a, you know, pretty bustling little area. So you'll get, you'll, you'll get more car traffic in a Taco Bell than a medical center that closed at 5 o'clock, 5:00 PM. So, I mean, you went down this road, so I just want to point that out again to my other colleagues, you know.
Understood. Understood. I'm, I'm just saying with respect, just to address the Chairman's, uh-
Right. And I'm just saying it's kind of apples and oranges, a medical center and a Taco Bell. You know, it's just, to me, it's apples and oranges.
I was just, just while- You know, we had extensive discussion with planning and CDOT with respect to the driveways, so.
Sure. And that's great, but we're the Zoning Board of Appeals. We ain't CDOT or-
Yeah. And I just, so my, my concern with Lockwood is just like the way that, um, a, a way behind, um, stack of 11 cars would probably push out on the Lockwood as traffic. And that creates somewhat of a queue in a, what probably used to be a pretty slow residential street.
Yeah.
Mario?
Yeah, I was going to say, that's why we, we don't feel it'll, it would back up on the Lockwood. That's why with a majority of the traffic coming from Belmont, we, we believe that that, that queue will pretty much come off, or, or, um, if it does, there's, you know, more likely the, the chance of it going to Belmont. The Lockwood apron is essential for maybe truck traffic where we have deliveries. It, it, it's imperative to be able to have that. Again, a smaller site, if Belmont is the only apron, then, and, and, and the deliveries come in while the, the building will still be open, right? Because it's, the, the, the hours of operation are such that a delivery wouldn't happen after 2:00 AM, right? So it'll, it'll, it'll happen during business hours. And that's why the Lockwood apron is absolutely imperative, uh, to be able to, to have that so that the truck or other vehicles can come on the site and not, um, inhibit the parking and/or stacking.
Okay.
And in certain cases, and, and, excuse me, Commissioner, and in certain cases, uh, if the truck is, is, is brought on the site, um, you know, maybe we, uh, for, for limited times, uh, you know, Lockwood could be closed off with cones, right? So that, um, there's not that issue that's being created, right? And then when the deliveries are done, the cones are picked up and, uh, it's business as usual.
Okay.
That happens quite often.
I have one more question on this and then I do want to move on from the point. Um, but just because you brought up, uh, delivery trucks, um, as a, um, a reason for the Lockwood Avenue, how big are these trucks? And also, this might go to Neil, but what's the time of them being in and out most regularly?
Neil, I'll let you speak to the timing.
Most of our deliveries, as, as mentioned, come during business hours. And I'm, by business hours, I don't mean that like the late night hours. They're usually during the day, uh, in the morning. We like them to come when we're not busy. So usually around 11, 12, uh, or in, in the afternoon. Um, obviously, you know, sometimes there, there's delays because of traffic, particularly in the city, but, uh, they're, they're usually during daytime hours. Uh, we don't want them to come during dinner when we're busy. Uh, so we usually try to get them in before dinner.
Okay, great. Um-
I, I had one question about the, uh, drive-through hours. In the application, there's, um, mention of other drive-throughs in the area, Dunkin' Donuts, Wendy's, McDonald's. Do you know what the, what the drive-through hours are for those establishments? How late they go?
I don't have that information.
Okay.
Neil?
I, I do not, but usually we try to mirror, uh, theirs. I know a lot of the McDonald's in, in Chicago are, you know, 2:00 AM, uh, or later. Uh, so I, but I don't know the specifics of this one, but we can, we can look that up and provide that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, having done, having done Dunkin's, I, I think some actually would go to 24 hours. But, um, I, I think, you know, obviously Neil, I think we talked about, uh, like you said, mirroring them so that there's no competitive disadvantage of you closing any sooner than, uh, than the other, uh, restaurants in the area.
Yeah. So, and on this, on this point, and, uh, you guys probably aren't, this isn't a surprise to anybody, we often will condition, um, the special use approval with, uh, a limitation on hours, especially when there's been such a broad range given to us. Um, you know, I, I, I hear the until 2:00 AM and until 4:00 AM. Um, I know we're not doing 24 hours on this, but I, I just want to throw that out and ask if you'd be okay with us adding a condition on hours to the special use?
Yeah, Neil, if the, the question's, uh, for me, yes, uh, we would be, uh, the only thing we'd ask is that on, on the weekends, uh, the hours be a little later than the weekdays because we are busier those days.
Right. And if I remember correctly, that Dunkin' Donuts is east of you towards Cicero. It's on the other side of, it's east of Laramie. So it's, it's not really, it, it, the neighborhood starts changing a little bit as you go a little bit east too. So I just want to make sure my colleagues understand that Dunkin' Donuts ain't extremely close to you. It's, it's further east of you.
All right. Any other questions from board?
Mr. Chairman, uh, Mark Kupiak, add one point, two points?
Sir, just make it quick if you can, Mark.
I'll, I'll be quick. Just ask you to take judicial notice that some of the Dunkin' Donuts within the city are in fact open with a driveway 24 hours. And some of those McDonald's locations are open 24 hours. So by comparison, this is not, you know, not a 24-hour operation.
Yep. You're, you're, you're absolutely right, Counselor, but there are 77 communities here in the city of Chicago and they're all different. So this one's more of a residential community than some of those-
That's why I was asking the question. I'm, I'm asking about the, the, the immediate vicinity, not just anywhere in the city.
Understood. And Mr. Chairman, number two, at, at the beginning of the case, did you read the recommendation from the Department of Planning?
So Mark, I'm going to read these at the end.
Okay.
Yep. But thank you for the reminder. All right. Um, any other questions from the board or else I'm going to go ahead and read the recommendation and, uh, we can move on.
Move on.
Great. All right. Um, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the single-lane drive-through to serve as proposed fast food restaurant, provided, number one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant, AG Bells 2 LLC. And number two, the development, the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated July 10th, 2020, prepared by MRV Architects Inc. Great. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, now we're going to go into our regular order, um, which brings us to, I believe I'm correct, 321 20S, um, which is on 9 West Washington Street. There we go. Okay. Um, do we have the applicant on the line? I see that the applicant is, uh, representing themselves.
Uh, we do have, sorry, we do have the applicant on the line. I just wanted to introduce myself first, uh, as the representative. Uh, good morning, Chairman and Board. I'm Kelly Moynihan, Associate Principal with FAR Associates, 53 West Jackson, Suite 650. And, uh, I believe I'm supposed to say I'm going to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. I affirm that. I'm a licensed architect in Illinois, acting as a project architect for this project at 9 West Washington Street. I have with me my colleague, Tim Kirkby, also Associate Principal and a certified planner and licensed architect in the state of Illinois. Also in attendance, we have Cheryl Curcio, co-founder and Board Chair, and Cabal King, Head of the School at the Global Experience Lab School, as known as GCE, the applicant for this special use.
Okay, real quick, real quick, Kelly, just, uh, but I appreciate you being proactive and swearing yourself and can I, I'd like to swear you in as well. Um, so do you, uh, promise to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in these proceedings?
I affirm that, yes.
Great. Thank you. And carry on.
Um, I'll just quickly introduce, uh, we are applying for a special use at 9 West Washington Street to construct a tenant buildout of the fourth floor space and first floor entrance for the use of an independent nonprofit high school, GCE. The existing four-story building is in the DX16 mixed-use zoning district. The project is an interior buildout only. No exterior alterations are included with the exception of new windows and existing openings on the west facade not visible from any street level. Uh, this is the top floor of this building with retail storage on the third floor below us and retail on the first and second floors. Uh, the buildout will contain various classroom and learning spaces and administrative offices. With that, I will turn it over to Cheryl.
Great. And, and just to confirm, so, um, Cheryl, is Cheryl the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Cheryl, if you could give, um, again, your name, address, and, um, then I'll swear you in.
Uh, yes, my name is Cheryl Curcio and my address is 1862 North Dayton Street.
Great. Cheryl, you, um, promised to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Great. Thank you.
Shall I just start?
Yeah, yeah, real quick. We're just trying to, um, to work out, um, parties. So Kelly, are you the, you're the representative of the applicant? You are not appearing as an architect expert.
I, I am an architect. I'm not appearing as the expert. I have my colleague here, Tim Kirkby, who's a certified planner and architect. So collectively, uh, we're, I'll call us both experts, but yes, I, either of us can testify in that way.
Okay, great. Um, okay, that makes sense. Uh, let's, let's have, let's have Cheryl walk us through and I'll let you know any other questions on the setup.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. Uh, good morning, everyone. Um, I am, as Kelly said, the co-founder and Board Chair of the school. Uh, GCE stands for Global Citizenship Experience. It's an independent high school founded 10 years ago, serving grades nine through 12. We're a small school that's already making a big impact in helping unite Chicago's diverse neighborhoods. Our students are ambassadors for social responsible citizenship. As young adults, GC students understand the power and possibilities of working together to make Chicago and our world a more equitable and just place, not just to live, but to thrive. Um, personally, I'd love to talk a lot more about the school, um, and how we're changing mindsets and raising the achievement gap for students across all of Chicago zip codes, but I want to be respectful of your time. So let me walk through what I, my understanding is of, um, what is involved in obtaining a special use permit. Locating our campus in the heart of the city is necessary for public convenience. Our 52 students currently come from 33 different neighborhoods across Chicago. Central access to public transportation is vital to ensure that any student who wants to come to GCE can get to school safely. Access to good public transportation options ensure equity and accessibility. Second, our school programming is very community-based. Every week, our students meet with civic, nonprofit, and corporate partners who help students put classroom learning into context. We call this real-world learning. Whether it is in person or now virtually, students understand the why behind what they are learning and community partners help expose students to exciting jobs and career paths. Moving to the downtown area will ensure our students have access to all the resources the city has to offer. Finally, all juniors and seniors at GCE have the opportunity to do internships. A central campus located will provide more job opportunities for students due to the proximity to more employers. Being centrally located helps all constituents. With respect to the special use permit, we also believe that there will be no negative effect on surrounding property values. Congregating outside the school is the typical concern of most residents and businesses. Again, GC only has 52 students and does not expect to reach its maximum of 170 students, uh, for the next six to eight years. We're a very small school. Second, GC's family handbook stipulates that students are expected to represent the values of the school at all times, including on weekends and vacations, on campus and off campus. It has been our experience after 10 years that young people who are invited to have a seat at the table and who have been taught that their voices matter will treat their space and the people they share it with with ultimate respect. Finally, part of the intentional design of our campus is to have significant community gathering spaces for both our students and our community partners. Contrary to negatively impacting property values, we actually think that establishing a new school of choice in the heart of the city will increase surrounding property values. For the committee's review, I shared three articles that speak to that point. Finally, we know that a few of the condo owners who reside in the building adjacent to the school filed objection, objection letters before meeting with us this week. The president of the condo board was not able to get a unanimous vote to withdraw the letters in time for this hearing. GC plans to invest $4 million in the buildout of the campus. $400,000 is earmarked for upgrades that will directly improve the value for the condo owners. I have supplied to the committee with a list of GC's planned upgrades in areas of noise abatement, security access, and stairwell egress safety. Our model is all about cultivating responsible, socially engaged citizens who are inspired to make a difference in the world. Our student body mirrors the socioeconomic and racial diversity of Chicago and our graduates are business entrepreneurs, filmmakers, and leaders in their community. Our partners include organizations such as Guggenheim, the Goodman Theater, Lyft, Home Depot, Alderman Offices, and the Dyson Foundation. GC isn't a traditional high school with noisy rebellious teenagers. It's a world-class learning hub that is educating problem solvers, leaders, and changemakers that will make owners in the 42nd Ward and throughout Chicago proud. I'm happy to answer any questions the committee may have. I also, you've already met Kelly, and we also have our head of school, Cabal King, uh, as a witness.
Great. Um, I'd like to get your planner, um, on the record as, um, as in, as your expert testimony. So could we, um, swear in your, your name, please? I believe it's Tim Kirby. Is that correct?
That's right. Hi. Good morning.
Hey, Tim, will you state your name, address, please?
Sure. Timothy Kirkby. Uh, do you mean my home address or my office address?
Home address.
Sure. That's 2125 Milton Avenue, Park Ridge, Illinois.
Okay. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's- Okay, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
And I don't believe we've had you in front of the board before, so will you give a brief background on your, your role in this and your level of expertise?
Sure, I, you know, I did appear once before the board, I think it was back in February, something like that, for a totally different application. So my background is that I work for FAR Associates, architects and planners. Like Kelly said, I'm an architect but also a certified planner and focuses on urban design. I've been actually, interesting, you know, Kelly and I work four blocks south of this site. So I'm pretty familiar, very familiar with the area on top of just my general, you know, knowledge of urban design issues. I feel like pretty comfortable talking about this particular application because I've, for 10 years, I've been working just a few blocks away from, from the site.
Great, do you, you have experience with schools?
Schools?
Yeah.
Um, as an architect, I've worked on school projects. As a planner, um, I have not had much experience as a planner with schools, more so as an architect.
Okay. Okay, great.
I, Chairman, I'm so sorry. Could Mr. Kirkby please restate his address?
Sure, it's 2125 Milton, that's M.I.L.T.O.N. Avenue in Park Ridge.
Great, thank you, Katie, you got it? Wonderful. Okay, Mr. Kirby, we will go ahead and acknowledge your, your expertise, and you guys can move forward.
I believe that's all we had to present. We would open it up to questions at this point.
Okay, great. I have a few questions, and then I'm sure the board does as well. Can you describe to us what the use, what's in the rest of the building? And, and the in and out of students? Is it distinct from other people's use of the rest of the building, or what's that process look like?
Do you want to answer that, or would you like me to?
I can answer that. So fortunately, this fourth floor tenant space has its own private entrance on the first floor. So students will have direct access from the ground floor on Washington, Washington Street into the kind of elevator and stair lobby, and they'll be able to go straight up to the fourth floor. The interstitial floors, the third floor is just retail storage for Nordstrom Rack, I believe, and mechanical space, and then the first two floors are retail.
Are there any other high schools in the area?
There are, there are two, there are two high schools that are close by. I'm blanking on the name of one of them, but Intrinsyc High School is one that just recently was established, I believe, maybe just over a year ago.
Great.
You also have After School Matters is about two blocks away, which is a significant after-school program.
The, the Google map shows an Innovations High School, just a block east of this also.
Yeah, and thanks, everyone, and just as we go forward, as, as you speak, can you just state your name before you, you hop in? And Tim, while I have you, I'd like to get, I'd like to get your sworn testimony that it's your opinion through your report that the special use meets all the criteria for special use.
Yes, that's right. I, you know, still, everything that I said in my sworn affidavit, I agree with still to this day.
Okay, great. All right, any other questions from the board on this one?
This is Commissioner Esposito. Can you describe the nearest residential dwelling units to this school? Are there any in this building itself or adjacent to it?
This is Cheryl Curcio. Yes, the, the building right adjacent to us, where we actually share a wall, is, is a condo, is a condo building. And we met with them this week to talk about our plans and what we were going, what we were planning to do.
And how did that meeting go?
Well, it went really well for those in person. I think what happened is for the last couple of months, we've been trying to speak with them, and for whatever reason, that they weren't, they weren't amenable to that. And I think now there was, we laid their fears about how we were already going to be putting in acoustics that would soundproof the area. Particularly, they were concerned, there's this south wall of our space that we share essentially a corridor. So there's a, not the technical one, but a double drywall. And then there's a corridor on the other side, and what we said that we were going to do is put, we were already going to be putting decorative acoustical tiles on that wall. And that, now that we know it's drywall and not actual brick and mortar, that we would be taking down that wall and filling it with acoustical insulation. So that was, that was one of their key concerns. Because even in a non-virtual environment, many of the owners do work from home. And then we pointed out to them two security issues that they weren't aware of, that actually the fourth floor space currently and the lobby both have unlocked access to the condo association. And so when we pointed that out, we said we were planning on replacing those doors again at our cost because we have the concern from a student point of view. And similarly, if anybody from the condo association were to try to get into the fourth floor space, we would need to be aware of that. And so those were the, those were the two, those were the two main issues. And then the third one, which is the most costly, is in our due diligence, we discovered that the stairwell that is the primary stairwell to the fourth floor, but is also used for egress by the, the condo association and the third and second floor of the building was out of current city code. And so we have offered, again, at the school's cost, to replace the entire stairwell and bring it up to code. And they were not aware of, of that issue. While they were aware of it through our correspondence, but were not aware of, of what the, what the potential impact could be of not replacing the stairwell.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I've, I've got a question about parking. Can, can you talk about the, the parking situation in that, in that neighborhood and how this school that you're proposing might affect it?
Sure. Um, we currently have, well, one, as I said, 52 students and then associated staff. 95% of our students and staff take public transportation to get to school. And with a now more central location, we expect that number to even be greater. There is at least 20 different parking garages, a block or two from, from the site, including some parking spaces that are literally just right across the street. And currently, there's a 15-minute loading-unloading zone that is also directly in front of the, of our entrance.
And somewhat related, during school time hours, will there be any, any activities or any reasons for the kids to leave the building?
Yes, I mean, every, our school is very experiential. So when we do go back in person, which right now, we're, we're planning for this entire school year to be virtual, we, we do go out and meet with civic and industry leaders throughout the city, which is one of the main reasons we want to be located downtown, to lessen the time to get to those places. But to take advantage of the local universities, the museums, the colleges, we're all about partnership in the community. So, for example, we hold some of our classes at some of the corporates, like Fifth Third Bank, we've held some of our econ class there. We look to partner with Harold Washington Library in their awesome media department. Instead of us having to replicate those type of resources, we want our students to be aware of the network of resources that exist in the city.
Yeah, that's great. That, I mean, that sounds like a, a really great program. Or from a special use point of view, we just think a lot about pedestrian safety and comfort. And in this scope, I'm kind of thinking about pedestrian safety as the kids being pedestrians in a busy area.
The, they're obviously all of our, when we do go out on these field experiences, they are chaperoned. Our class sizes are a maximum of 14 students. So it's a small group going out, and we have two adults that are chaperoning, albeit we have the kids lead where we're going, so that they learn how to navigate the city. And we have been doing this for the past 10 years. And, and having to navigate, actually getting from that Lincoln Park area down to downtown and then getting to where we wanted to go. So we have been doing this for a long time and kind of have it, have the process down. And also, you know, our students are different. We have a, we have a different kind of student handbook than most schools. And, and it is about, it is about really that kind of business etiquette that we're looking for, that our students exhibit.
Yeah, great. Okay, any other questions for the board? I'm going to go ahead and read the department's recommendation on this. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the school use to allow for a high school on the fourth floor of an existing four-story building, provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant Urban X Learning DVA GCE Lab School. And the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated June 5th, 2020, prepared by FAR Associates. Cheryl, thank you for coming today. We appreciate your application, and we'll take it under consideration.
Great, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Great, we're going to stick in regular order and move on now to Matter 32220Z, which is on 1005 West 31st Street.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and member of the board. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, is this Mr. Zhang?
Yes, my name is Sharon Zhang, and I'm the owner and applicant for the subject property located at 1005 West 31st Street. I'm joined in by, I'm sorry.
No, Mr. Zhang, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Great, thank you, go ahead.
I'm joined in by the witness, Clark Zhao Chen Wang, the architect of the record from Variation Design, and John Kapeke, our co-consultant from Berman Nationwide.
Okay, great. Before we get to them, can you talk about what brings you here today?
Yes, we are requesting a variation to reduce the west side of setback from five feet to one foot and the east side setback from five foot to three foot in order to allow the construction of new four-story mixed-use building, which consists of two ground floor commercial unit and total of four drowning unit on second and third floor. And on the first, on the fourth floor, we have rooftop deck and green roof. And also, in the rear, we are providing five onsite parking spaces.
Okay, great. Can you, Mr. Zhang, go ahead and have your witnesses introduce your witnesses, and I'll swear them in, and they can present as they wish.
Yes, Clark, can you, do you want to start?
Yeah, hello, everyone. So my name is Clark Zhao Chen Wang. My home address is at 230 East Ontario Street, Chicago 60611. And I'm a licensed architect in the state of Illinois. I helped submit the affidavit along with the finding of fact. Yes.
Great, thank you, Mr. Zhao Chen Wang. Do you swear to tell the truth today, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Great, can you walk us through your, your analysis of the property, please?
Yes, may I introduce another witnesses here? We have, we also have a, okay, we also have a John Kapeke here.
Great, John, go ahead and state your name, address, please.
Good morning. So my name is John Kapeke. I'm the co-consultant on this project. My address is 111 West Washington.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Okay, I'm gonna provide you a brief background of the property and a bit about myself. I'm a structural engineer by profession. I have been living in Bridgeport area for over 22 years now where the property is located. So it's always, always my interest to, to build and improve the community. And I was looking for an opportunity to improve and available property in the community and purchase this two vacant lot. As far as I know, the, the vacant lot has been, I mean, vacant for many years now. So I purchased the property back in March 2018. And the, in, in the initial intention is to build two single-family home in the area. And I met with the Alderman and in the review meeting with the 11th Ward Alderman, Patrick Thompson, he expressed that a prefer, preference to provide a retail space and condo in order to improve the overall street skate because the property is right next to Morgan Street, where there are many shops and banks and are, are the business retail spaces. So he felt that it's better to provide retail instead of two single-family home. So we, and then we proceeded with the design, the recommended design, and and, you know, the, the lot that we have is 46 feet by 125, which is slightly narrower than the 50 standard city lot and.
Okay, so this is a substandard lot?
Yes, yes. So each lot is 20, 23 feet. So following the recommendation and direction from the Alderman, this would require a ZOOM change to allow for the retail use and to allow for a greater allow, allowable building height. So we proceeded with the ZOOM change, and in for last year, September 18, 2019, the property received approval for the ZOOM change from IS-1 to B2-2 District under the application number 20124-T1. And this is supported favorable by Alderman Patrick Thompson. And based on the community, community meeting we host, we receive positive feedback from the neighbor, and we believe that a positive impact to the community and the visual 31st Street by providing a more productive use than the current vacant site. And the design that we presented now, it's the same design we presented during the ZOOM change as well as the community meeting. We didn't change anything. So from here, I think I'll refer to our co-expert to highlight a couple criteria for the, the variation.
Okay, again, this is John Kapeke speaking, co-consultant for this project. So per the zoning ordinance, Section 1730406, no side setbacks are required in a B district except when a property abuts an R-zone property. And this is applicable in, to both adjacent properties to the specific site. To the east of 1001 West 31st Street and the west 1007 West 31st Street. So the R district side setbacks are then defaulted to. In this case, it would require a 13.8-foot combined setback with neither individual setback being less than five feet. This is a hardship for, to provide a reasonable return for this property, given the existing condition of having a narrower lot width. Further, the four proposed condo units are, are demised along the length of the building, north and south, and would have bedroom sizes. And would have bedroom sizes without the, you know, factoring in the reduced setbacks of approximately six foot eight and eight foot eight in width. So it's not necessarily feasible or desired as a standard for the market, given this is new construction. Per building code, the minimum size for bedrooms are at least 70 square feet. And again, for new constructions, those are minimums. It's not necessarily a preferred option. This proposal accounts for complying with light and vent requirements for these units as well as the adjacent properties. To the east, there's a three-foot setback provided to not impact the existing openings at both the first and second floors. And then to the west, openings at the second floor are not impacted due to the the recess from the exterior wall and there are no openings at the first floor of that property. So the ground floor commercial spaces benefit with the side but setback reductions as well by providing a wider storefront and for allowing additional width to accommodate future tenant programming configurations. At the present time, there is no specific tenant. However, the the owner, Jirang, he's in conversation with a prospective client related to possibly providing early education, daycare, or after-school space, given that the site's location is adjacent to elementary schools. These are uses that are permitted in the B2-2 district. Another point I'd like to make just briefly is note that while not formally submitted with our provided exhibits, we did receive a letter kind of beyond the deadline from the alderman. It was issued on Wednesday, October 14th. That can be provided to this board if required. But prior to this receival of the formal aldermanic support letter, we did provide an email from him that referenced this in the submitted exhibit. So the alderman is definitely on board with, you know, like I said, provided direction for, you know, really revitalizing 31st Street, providing, like I said, some kind of retail component to this and having more density. That's more in line with sort of the existing adjacent properties that you can sort of see from the photos, so. Is there any questions from the board?
First, I I acknowledge your expertise. And now I'll open up any questions from the board on this matter. Sounds like none. We will, we will take this under consideration. So thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you. You have a good one.
Yeah, thanks. I'm now going to call a 15-minute recess. I'm motioning for a 15-minute recess. Commissioner Toyah seconds. Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toyah?
Yes, yes, sorry, I was on mute. Sorry.
No worries. And I vote in favor as well. So let's all reconvene at 11:10 a.m.
Thank you. Sounds good. Thank you.
It's done.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Welcome back, everyone, to this October 16, 2020, meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I move to reconvene, reconvene this meeting. Commissioner Toyah seconds. Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner Toyah? We'll give Sam another minute.
I'm in. Yes. Thank you.
And I vote to reconvene as well. So we are, we are back at it. Going down the regular business, this brings us to matter 32420S on 2000 West Montrose Avenue.
Chairman, did you say 324?
It's 32420S.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Nam Fung Ho. Can you hear me?
Yeah, okay, let's let's proceed with 324. I went a little bit out of order. I had that 323 was possibly being continued, but let's stick right now with 324 and then I'll go back. Is this Ms. Hope?
Yes, that's me.
Great. If you could just, if you could say your name and your address for the record.
So my name is Nam Fung Ho. I am at 4309 North Central Park Avenue, Chicago, Illinois. And I am the owner of Washington, New York, Chicago LTD.
Great. Ms. Ho, do you promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Feel free to continue and tell us what you're trying to do here today.
So I'm trying to apply for the special use to establish a beauty salon. We took over, there's a, there's a salon already established at 2000 West Montreal. And we bought over from the previous owner. It's just that what we're, but when we applied to get our business license, that's when we found out that the previous owner applied for a special use. And since we are taking over, we have to reply for the special use for our own.
And tell us a little bit about your business. So you're, you're strictly going to be doing nails and previously this also was only a nail salon?
So previously, the owner did some nails, but they did like very basic, like just manicure, pedicure, no chip. But when we took over, we are more focused more on the nails. So we do expand out all the work that is could be done on nails like that include like acrylic, gels, the powders, more artwork that could be more done on the nails. And we don't have any, they have like a hair stylist there that does hair too, but we don't have that. They did eyebrow threading. We are not doing that. We are actually doing eyebrow waxing. So just like we pretty much do like certain stuff that's a little bit less than them, but more on the nail area.
Okay, great. And have you worked in this industry before?
Um, I, my brothers and sister have. I have come out to help. I'm not licensed to work on nails, so I just kind of come out to like help with phone calls or whatever they need, but I don't really work in the industry.
Okay. And then just to confirm, all of your technicians, they'll be licensed, correct?
Yes. My sister-in-law is actually a cosmetologist licensed and my dad, my my dad, my brother is nail-licensed.
Great. How many people do you envision employing in total?
Currently, right now, due to COVID and due to the fact that our business is very new, we, I only employ two and it is my fifth brother and his wife.
Okay, great. And I'm kind of on that light. What type of precautions do you envision taking with your business in light of the ongoing COVID pandemic?
So we did follow the CDC guideline. We do have a signing sheet that tell them like what is being in the when you come in, like, because we do the psych service from person to person, there is a chance if they, and then we do not take people who is currently having fever or if they are exposed in any sort of way. And we do check their temperature coming in. We have hand sanitizer throughout the shop. And we also have disinfectant to wipe down our working area in between customer. We try to take appointment only so that there's not too much people coming in at once. And we tried to limit 10 people, including the people working there to just 10 people. And we do have three picket chairs and we do it like we get, not get rid of it, but we're not currently not using the middle one. So that people could, the customer could have like space in between, try to keep as much distance as possible. The same thing with the nail station where you work on the hands. We do every other table with screen shields for between the customers and the tech, just because it is really hard to keep the distance between the service, the the customer and the service. So we have a screen shield and we ask people that comes in to wear mask. And we also provide masks for people who forget or something happened to their mask during the process. And then, of course, same thing with our waxing area. We do wipe down that we actually cover. We have a laying down chair in there. We do have a plastic sheet covering it right currently, right now, so that we could easily wipe it down in between customers. And we hope to continue using those form as whatever the CDC guideline will help.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, that's great. It sounds like this is, I'm sure, is fully changed your business plan. So we're glad that the CDC has some set out guidelines. Any questions from the board?
No, not really.
Oh, thank you. Are there any questions from the board members then?
All good.
Okay, great. Ms. Hope, thank you so much for coming from us today and good luck. I am now going to have Jeanette read the department's recommendation.
Thank you. My name is Jeanette Velasquez. And as the chairman stated, I will be reading the department's recommendation into the record. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed beauty salon. The department finds that this proposal complies with all the applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, is in the interest of the public convenience and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds the beauty salon will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of operating characteristics. And lastly, the proposed beauty salon is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
Thank you, Jeanette. And real quick, can you identify yourself one more time?
Of course. My name is Jeanette Velasquez and I am one of the project coordinators for the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Great. And I'm gonna have you, I'm gonna retroactively swear you in. So do you promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right, thanks again, Ms. Hope. And we will take this under consideration.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too. All right. Now we're gonna hop back to the real regular order, which means matter 32320Z.
Yep.
Okay, great. Do we have Ms. Ms. Weeks and Mr. Weeks online?
Yes, we are here.
Great. Can you please both identify yourself, name and address?
Agnieszka Yulanovich, Week 6709 North Kinzuwa.
I'm Lawrence Weeks, same address, 6709 North Kinzuwa.
Okay, great. First, for Ms. Weeks, do you promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Great. And Mr. Weeks, do you promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Wonderful. All right. Tell us a bit about what brings you here today.
What you can see from this Google Maps, our lot is triangular shaped. And that makes it challenging to do things, it turns out. We have a pre-existing, we've always called it a side porch, but it's part of doing our project to enclose it. We discovered it's called a sunroom technically. So we have an open sunroom on the side of our house. And the open sunroom, we're planning to enclose it and make it into a four-season livable space. But with the setbacks required in the lot because it was triangular shape, the best we could have would be a triangular-shaped tower in the middle of lot under current zoning codes. So we need to reduce the setback for the front setback to eight feet from 30-something feet.
Great. And the goal, the goal here is to add a thing in addition, correct?
It's to enclose the sunroom that's there. So they call adding, but it's enclosing existing space.
It does exist, so it has a
So we're bringing everything up to code is what the main goal is here. Okay. Okay, that makes sense. Has there been any discussion with neighbors or what, you know, tell me a little bit about what made you realize that you you weren't to code?
Well, the permit was denied, so that was the first indication. But my wife, we discussed with neighbors all around us and everyone's supportive. We've heard nothing but support from neighbors. They're all pretty amazed at the process we're going through, so they're all rooting for us.
Probably a triangular-shaped lot. We know these are are pretty unique in the city.
Yes.
Yeah, that's challenging.
Okay, do we have any questions from the board?
This is Commissioner Esposito. Can you just describe the windows you'll be using to enclose the porch?
So our house has the original 1927 steel casement windows. And we really, really, really wanted to get matching windows. But it turns out that they cost a fortune, basically as much as the rest of the project. And we would have to get separated insulated units, which are much chunkier than what we have now. So we've gone to using casement wood aluminum clad windows instead.
They will be looking like the ones that are
They'll be very similar in design to the existing windows.
Terrific. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? All right. If not, Mr. and Mrs. Weeks, we will take this under consideration. Thank you for coming today.
Thanks a lot.
All right. And now I'd like to call matter 32520S. Which is at 4955 North Damon Avenue.
That's me.
Is this Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
And then you're the applicant, correct?
I am.
Great. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Sarah Thompson, 5054 North Winchester Avenue, 2W Chicago, Illinois 60640.
Great. And Ms. Thompson, do you swear and tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Tell us a little bit about what you're trying to do here today.
Well, I am the owner and operator of Freya Inc. I am also the applicant proposing to establish a hair salon at 4955 North Damon. And to do so, I'm here seeking a special use. My current salon, established six years ago, is located at 4919 North Damon and I would like to move approximately 350 feet north to 4955 North Damon. The new location is more than double the size of my current location, allowing me to hire more employees. My current storefront is partially below grade with trees in front of the small storefront window. Whereas the new location is at street level with large windows making it much more visible. I've worked as a cosmetologist in Ravenswood for a total of 11 years. And I would like to grow my business while remaining in the neighborhood that has supported my career as well as my business endeavor.
Great. And is, I know the business is moving. Is it otherwise going to remain the same? Or are you offering any new services that you weren't previously offering?
No, I'm not going to offer any new services. I'm just hoping to hire more people. The space I'm in now is just under 300 square feet. It's a studio, so I can't The space I'm in now is just under 300 square feet. It's a studio, so I can't hire anyone else until I get more space.
Okay, any, any change to your business hours?
No.
As you're already operating a salon, I know you're, you're likely in the mix of, of this already, but what type of COVID precautions are you going to be taking at this larger salon?
What the CDC recommends. I'm not going to be able to hire more people right away. But I can, I can support this salon by myself as well as the one other person I have working with me right now. So she'll be in the back and I'll be in the front and we have to sanitize everything and take temperatures and that's, that's pretty much it.
Alright, board members, any other questions?
No, just remember, covered faces keep open places. So we gotta make sure everyone has a mask on as well.
Correct. We do, we do that as well, yes.
I'm just, I'm just throwing that in there. I can't help myself.
It's a COVID line.
There you go.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Alright, thank you, Mrs. Thompson or Ms. Thompson. Jeanette Velazquez is going to read the department's recommendation.
Once again, my name is Jeanette Velazquez. The recommendation from the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair salon. The department finds that this proposal complies with all the applicable standards of the zoning ordinance. Is in the interest of the public convenience and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds the hair salon will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area. And is also designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
Thank you, Ms. Velazquez. And you're still under, you're still under oath. So thanks for reading the recommendation. And Ms. Thompson, the matter will be under consideration. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
Alright, let's, let's keep things moving and go to matter 32620S. Which is at 4330 North Lincoln Avenue.
Hello?
Wait, is, is Ms. Contino online?
Yes, this is Marta Contino.
Alright, great. Ms. Contino, can you state your name and address?
My name is Marta Contino and my address is 4614 North Leamington Avenue, Chicago, Illinois 60630.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great. Go ahead and tell us a little bit about what your goals are here today.
I am seeking a special use to establish a hair salon that is located within 1,000 feet of an existing personal service located in a B12 community shopping district. I am a hair colorist and the owner of Rome Salon and I have over 14 years experience behind the chair. And I've been working in a salon suite established, where I established Rome Salon over the past year. Rome Salon is a boutique salon that specializes in natural low maintenance looks while maintaining healthy hair. Rome Salon prides itself in using environmentally and ethically friendly products. I seek to establish a bigger, more permanent home in the North Center community where I can expand my business to a three-chair salon. And bring, I bring with me a strong established clientele from many different parts of the city, suburbs, as well as the North Center community.
Yeah, and so your business will just be a hair salon, correct? You won't be offering additional services?
Just hair services.
Okay, great. And to just quick go through some of the questions you've probably heard me ask other people today. What are your hours of operation?
I'm Tuesday through Saturday, 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Or maybe I said nine, I forgot.
Okay.
Yeah, it varies a little.
Okay, but latest, latest hours would be nine?
Would be 7:00 PM.
Would be 7:00 PM. Okay.
Yes.
And what type of COVID precautions are you taking as a, or plan to take as your business?
On what I've been doing already, which is mask wearing. All of my clients must wash their hands before entering. I'm using barberside to disinfect all surfaces that are touched in between each client. New gloves are used in between each client. I currently only see one client at a time to limit the number of people in the space. But any, involving any CDC precautions.
Any other questions from the board?
No, I don't.
Alright, if no other questions from my board, then Ms. Velazquez, as you're still, the last question, sorry, is you're still sworn in. Can you go ahead and read the department's recommendation?
Yes. Again, my name is Jeanette Velazquez. To read the department's recommendation into the record. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair salon. The department finds that this proposal complies with all the applicable standards of the zoning ordinance. Is in the interest of the public convenience and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds the proposed hair salon is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort. And is also compatible with the character of the surrounding area.
Okay, great. Ms. Contino, we will take your application under consideration. So thank you for coming today and stay well.
Thank you very much.
Next up is matter 32720S. At 755 West Division Street.
Hello. Hi, my name is Melissa Gomez, the applicant for Division Street.
Welcome to ZBA. Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, it's Melissa Gomez, 2229 West Thomas Street, Chicago, Illinois.
And Ms. Gomez, do you promise to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do. Well, I have an existing salon business on Division Street and I'm looking to add massage to our service menu. So I'm here today to ask, to add that. We've been established since 2001 at this location. And with the ever-changing times, we're looking to add this new service that a lot of people, amongst of our customers are interested in also getting massage.
Okay, great. So currently
Currently, we offer hair, hair and nails mostly, and waxing.
Okay, hair and nails and wax. Is there, I might have misnoted something. Do you do any body art at your location?
We do. We have gone before this board before and we also have a body art license and we offer microblading here.
Okay, great. Remind me, how many massage therapists do you intend to bring on?
At the moment, we, we have one and we're looking to possibly add just another one, one, to have two massage therapists.
Okay, and I'm assuming your current therapist is licensed in whatever ways massage therapists are required to be?
Absolutely. She's also on the line as well, if you had any questions for her, but she's licensed, insured. And she's been in the business for over 12 years.
Okay. Will you want to be changing your hours with the expanded business?
Expect to. Right now, we've been here Tuesday through Saturday, usually from 10 to 8. Mostly those are the times that our customers come in.
Okay, great. And a question I've been asking, but this is, this is a little bit different for your added services. What type of precautions will you be taking in regards to COVID when it comes to massage services?
Absolutely. I mean, we, we plan to follow all the guidelines. Right now, we're, we temperature check all of our customers, which is the same we will do for massage. We ask our customers to wash their hands and sanitize prior to the service. We sanitize every surface table that we're going to use or customer will access. We're using disposable sheets as well. So almost everything is disposable afterwards and everyone is required to wear masks, technicians, as well as the customers at all times.
Okay, great. Alright. Any questions from the board? Alright, thank you, Ms. Gomez, for coming today. We're gonna quick have Ms. Velazquez read the department's recommendation on this matter.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, they actually have an expert, Tim Barton. So he would be the qualified person to speak on behalf of the special use criteria.
Okay, go ahead. Sorry, Mr. Barton, I didn't see anyone else on the
I just wanted to be sure everything was
Could you give, could you give your, your name and address for the board and then I'll, I'll swear you in and acknowledge your expertise?
Timothy Barton with an office at 20 North Wacker, Wacker Drive, Chicago, Illinois 60606.
Great. And Mr. Barton, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Alright, and you've appeared in front of our board several times before, is that correct?
That's right. I have.
I, I acknowledge your expertise. So feel free to now walk us through or any make, or make any comments that you wish.
Okay. Well, just from the, from the, at the outset, I just want to say I prepared a report assessing the site and its surrounding neighborhood. Reviewed the five criteria. And on the basis of that, I, it's my opinion that the massage service will, at this location, meet the criteria for special use approval. The character of the use is is comparable to other area businesses. The use itself is consistent with salon and spa offerings. The hours are similar to other businesses on the street. As a matter of fact, they're, they're less. The, this business will be open from 8 until 8. There are a lot of restaurants and bars on this section of Division Street that keep much later hours, so there's no conflict there. The salon itself is, is well lit, it's highly visible. The spa portion, the massage portion is at the back of the salon. Front of the salon is a retail area. And that's what's visible from, from Division Street, but that's large display windows are consistent with all the buildings on the street. It's an older, older style streets, pedestrian friendly, pedestrian retail street in the zoning ordinance. So this is a type of business that is consistent with others on the block.
Okay, great. Great. Are there any questions from the board to Mr. Barton?
This is Commissioner Esposito. Mr. Barton or, or the applicant. Can somebody describe the retail operation? And what the product selection is planning to be?
Yes, this is Melissa Gomez. So we also, since we're a hair salon, we offer all of our hair products. So that's the retail version of this. I, right now I don't have anything for massage. Maybe there'll be skin, some kind of skincare, something in the future, but at this time, it's really just mostly shampoos, conditioners, hair products.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, any other questions from the board? Sounds like none. So I'm gonna go ahead and read the department's recommendation. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed massage establishment, provided that the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Melissa Gomez, doing business as Dynamic Salon Spa Studios Co. And the establishment maintains clear, non-reflective windows on the street-facing building facade, which will, which shall not be painted over, darkened or obstructed in any way, so that the reception and waiting area is visible from the street. Ms. Gomez, thank you.
Thank you.
Keep the matter under consideration.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Everyone now going to move to matter 32920S, which is CWAS LLC. I'm gonna make sure, make sure everyone has a second to get adjusted and then I'm gonna read some notes ahead of hearing matter.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can, I can hear you. And actually, if you would, if you would mute yourself as I read some preliminary notes. And then, and then I'll let you guys know when we can do introductions.
I, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I didn't hear that.
If you could, if you can mute yourself while I read some, some preliminary notes and then I'll let you know when you can unmute.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, great. This is matter 32920S, dispensary 33. I want to be sure that everyone in attendance today here understands how this hearing will proceed. I think it's important to emphasize what we are all here for today. This is not the town hall meeting. This is a meeting of the zoning board of appeals. This board is not a court of original jurisdiction and it is not a legislative body. We have a very specific regulatory framework in which we have to operate. Therefore, while everyone has timely signed up to testify for 32920S is welcome to give testimony. This testimony must fit inside the regulatory framework. What do I mean by this? The law requires that the applicant for 32920S prove to the board that its application meets the special use criteria set forth in section 1713 0905A of the Chicago zoning ordinance. There are the, there are only five criteria the board can consider when making a decision. Therefore, any testimony given during the hearing on 32920S needs to be relevant to these five criteria. I want to be clear. Further, sorry. Further, these five criteria do not exist in the abstract. We also have an overlay of state and local laws that limit what we can hear. For instance, and with respect to this particular application, Illinois law is very clear that the control or restriction of competition is not a proper or lawful zoning objective. I want to be clear that there may be other instances in which I determine that testimony is not relevant to the criteria or that we are prevented on hearing the testimony due to state or local law. The moment that happens, I will conclude such person's testimony. This gets me to my next announcement, how the hearing will proceed. Again, this is not a town hall. The applicant will go first and put on all of its witnesses. After the applicant has put on its case, I will go immediately over to the objectors. Those objectors can cross-examine any of the applicant's witnesses and put on all of their witnesses. After that, I will return to the applicant for its rebuttal and closing remarks. At which time, the applicant can cross-examine any of the objectors and their witnesses, as well as put its witnesses on for any rebuttal testimony. We may have some aldermen here today. We'll, we'll look and see if they're present. But if the alderman would like to make a statement, he or she or his or her representative may choose whether that it's immediately after the applicant's presentation or later on. Throughout this process, the board will ask any questions we may have of the applicant or of any of the witnesses involved. After that, the board will take the matter under advisement. Please make sure that you state your name and address prior to giving any testimony. In order to ensure that this runs smoothly, please do not repeat any testimony. If your testimony is repetitive, I will conclude your testimony. Remember via Zoom, I have the power to mute. For the applicant, I have a specific order in which I would like you to present today. First, identify your witness and their role in the project. Number two, next, if you have an opening or general statement that you would like to make, present that. Number three, then I would like you to walk the board through how people are flowing into and through your proposed facility, starting with their arrival at the sidewalk. Number four, next.
Alderman Burnett is here, I apologize.
No worries, Alderman Burnett.
Zone meetings, man, you know, zone, zone, zone it, you know. Did you ask me something?
Nope, I'm just noting that, that you're gonna speak at some point in time, so we'll, let me finish with my preliminary remarks and then we'll hold your order of you speaking.
Yeah, I know, I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, number four, next, I want you to walk the board through the process for loading and unloading and how it is supervised. Number five, then we'll have questions on your security plans, your community meeting, your proposed social your proposed social equity plan, and how you are meeting miscellaneous regulatory requirements. Number six, finally, I'll open it up to any remaining questions from the board. When it comes to the objectors to present, I'll also have a few points to go through and how I want that to work. Without much further ado, I believe we have some attorneys here representing the applicant. So if those attorneys could introduce themselves.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Ashley Brant on behalf of the applicant. I'm joined here today and who will be presenting with Brian Zeisis, the operational manager for the proposed dispensary and an employee of Quaz and Gentle Ventures, its owner. I've got Joe Ryan, the MAI certified appraiser. I've got Mr. Saquon Golar of Rescue Eight Services, who's the security contractor and security expert hired by the, by Quaz and who performs security and will perform security for this, this dispensary. And then I've got Ms. Jamie Magliff, the architect for the, for the, for the project. And I believe we've got two aldermen as well who were listed on our, on our testimony form.
Okay, great. Mr. Brant, I'll let you, as you please, make an opening statement and then you, you can decide what order you want the aldermen and your witnesses to go in. When, when they appear, I'll swear them in.
I, I, I will, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. I think I'll make my opening statement. And then I would like to not inconvenience the aldermen by, and I'd like to allow them to go first.
Really quick, I think there's two aldermen here, right? Is Alderman Burnett and Alderman Vasquez here? Great.
Thank you, sir. Quaz LLC, the applicant proposes to establish an adult-use cannabis dispensary at the subject property located at 1152 West Randolph. This property is located at the intersection of Randolph and Racine, a location uniquely suited to the operation of the dispensary and draws pedestrian traffic from Chicago's Fulton Market neighborhoods and West Loop neighborhoods. The property was reclassified through a zoning map amendment in May of 2020 by the Chicago City Council to be in a DX3 downtown mixed use within the 27th Ward and within the West Cannabis District as recently codified pursuant to section 177100 of the Chicago Municipal Code. The applicant is wholly owned by Gentle Ventures LLC, which received a west district slot during the recent cannabis dispensary lottery for hopefuls last November. Gentle Ventures presently operates a medical and adult-use cannabis dispensary in the 47th Ward and has an exemplary operational record and a history of community engagement and support. The record is important as the dispensary will do business as dispensary 33 with similar branding and the standards and commitment to the quality and the community that the current location of dispensary 33 is known for. The applicant requires a special use per ordinance, and the table of use is 174207AAA1, to allow the applicant to establish its adult-use cannabis dispensary allowed in accordance with ordinance 1791296 and is authorized to operate as a second-site facility pursuant to the Illinois Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act, which is why we're before this board this morning. The applicant has received notice of the requirement for a special use from the zoning administrator. The applicant has executed a lease with the property owner with the intent and desire to establish an adult-use cannabis dispensary at the subject site. The proposed dispensary will pull from resources and operations of its owner's current methods of operation, which function similar to other retail establishments that feature the sale of controlled substances located within the city of Chicago. As such, the proposed use of this site will comply with all pertinent provisions of state regulations and the Chicago zoning ordinances and with regular Chicago, other Chicago ordinances and with regard to such use. The adult-use cannabis dispensary will be established within an existing commercial space, which has been vacant for more than six years. The proposed operating premises shall contain 6,600 square feet of space comprised of 3,800 square feet on the first floor of the premises, with 2,800 square feet in the basement. Aside from the interior renovations of the subject site, no new construction is proposed or required, apart from minor exterior improvements. The dispensary will have a large entry and waiting room, which includes a security checkpoint where customers are required to pass all regulatory entry procedures and two restrooms for customer convenience. Those restrooms will be ADA accessible. A large sales floor, approximately 1,525 square feet, with a payment checkout counter. It will also have an operations and security area and employee break room and lounge, secured cannabis and inventory vaults, which allow for the safe storage of products, equipment, and money associated with the sales, and four employee and security-only restrooms. The applicant is locally owned and operated and employs a city-sourced workforce. The dispensary intends to employ an operating staff of roughly 30 to 40 licensed and trained individuals. All staff members will be registered and certified and have passed background checks with the state of Illinois, the state of Illinois's Department of Financial and Professional Regulations, as well as will have met the required amounts of training and education put forth by the IDFPR for, for annual quotas. The applicant is committed to community-sourced employment by employing a workforce representative of the city in which it is located and operating. This includes staff members and managers from a wide array of minorities with roots here in Chicago. The dispensary has minority owners and it endeavors to have employees that qualify it as a majority minority under the state's definition of social equity status pursuant to the Illinois Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act and the standards promulgated by the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. The dispensary's proposed sales will be seven days a week from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, even though state law allows dispensaries to operate from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM as a general matter. The applicant will offer a variety of cannabis and other related products, cannabis and cannabis-related products, including without limitation dried cannabis, edibles, concentrate and concentrates and topicals. The dispensary operates in a manner consistent with applicable city of Chicago ordinances and state of Illinois regulatory rules and guidelines for the storage, dispensing, and destruction of cannabis and other related activities. The dispensary will meet all applicable security guidelines adopted by the state of Illinois for safe storage, dispensing, sale, and destruction of cannabis. The dispensary will be equipped with a high-end security camera and surveillance system, as well as high-level security lighting covering both the inside and outside of the facility. Proposed exterior cameras will cover all areas of ingress and egress, including the public way and alley. The interior cameras will cover the entire facility, including the reception and waiting areas, point of sales counters, and inventory and storage rooms. The security systems are directly linked to and monitored by a certified third-party security company on an around-the-clock basis, and such information is accessible by local law enforcement, the state of Illinois Police Department, and the Chicago Office of Emergency Management and Communications. All footage will be retained for a minimum of 90 days. Additionally, the dispensary employs a licensed private security contractor perform, to perform on-premise security and will review and oversee its security, which will review and oversee its operations. Entry to the dispensary will be through a main entrance door located on the east portion of Randolph Street, of the Randolph Street side of the building. This entrance leads to a waiting and queuing area with accessible restrooms and seating for those waiting to be permitted access to the sales floor. This entrance scenario will be strictly regulated with cameras and at least one full-time security agent and receptionist. Egress from the dispensary from the sales floor, post-purchase waiting and ride-sharing calling area through a second vestibule equipped with a two-door mantrap leading onto Racine, which is monitored by a second full-time security agent and monitored by a camera. All inventory, cannabis and related products will be stored within the restricted-access portions of the premises where entry is limited to authorized staff members and security personnel. These restricted-access areas will be secured from the remainder of the public and the limited-access areas of the premises by automatically locking electronic access doors. All restricted-access area dispensary and inventory storage areas will require key cards or electronic and/or electronic passcodes. All deliveries will be effectuated through a highly-secured garage at the north of the building off of an alley running from Racine Street, which is also monitored by video surveillance. Every customer will be required to provide dispensary staff with a current and valid form of photo identification, driver's license or state ID. No person will be allowed entry to the limited-access sales floor of the proposed dispensary who does not show proof that they are 21 years of age or older. Will show through the evidence submitted and by way of the affidavits we have already submitted and the proposed findings of fact that we meet the requirements for a special use. With that, Mr. Chairman, I have in my notes, we've identified the witnesses and I've made my opening statement. I, I'd like to have the alderman go for convenience and then we can get back to the, to the proposed order.
Yep, that works well here.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Alderman, as you speak, if you could just give your, your name, identity, address, and I'll swear you in.
Okay, I'm Alderman Walter Burnett. My address for my office is 4 Northwestern. I'm the alderman of the 27th Ward.
Real, real quick, Alderman Burnett, I just want to swear you in for the record. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in this proceeding?
So help me God, I do.
Thank you, sir.
All right. So as, as you know, Mr. Chairman, first of all, congratulations, this is your first meeting. When you came before our committee to get sworn in or to get confirmed at city, I mentioned to you that I'm concerned about all these marijuana dispensaries that I have been working with, all of the ones that have been coming to my ward to encourage them to have some type of social equity component. And so far, all of the ones that have come before you in my ward have done so. And including this one, this one actually, and, and they've done it in a myriad of ways, as I told you. Some of them do it where they let the African-American own the building, you rent it to them, and you get a piece of the profits, you know. Some of them, they let them manage the whole area and, and be a, they have, some of them have, one of them have a social equity component in their ownership, and they let the African-American own it with that. And, and, and there's a couple of other ways they're doing it. This one has been the, I, I should say the most forthright one, with allowing a young lady by the name of Gina Moreno to buy into their company. And I admire them for that. And we did have a community meeting in regards to this, as we do with all of them. And in reference to this one, you know, I was surprised, this is one of my first ones, I was surprised that so many residents in the West Loop smoked marijuana. That was very revealing to me because it, for whatever reason, a lot of residents in this community came out to support dispensary 33. So I guess they go up north and get their, get their marijuana products. So I'm in support of this, just as I am in support of all of the ones before this who have worked with me on, on trying to have an African-American component with their ownership somehow, some way. So I support this, I ask for you guys to support it. If I, if I didn't support it, I wouldn't say anything, or I'd come out adamantly against it. So, and who knows, that may happen. But so that's all I have to say. Any questions for me?
No, Alderman, I'd say thank you so much for taking the time today to come and explain to us your support. It's helpful for our process.
All right, I hope that, I hope that your board and your committee would, as I asked you, when he came before us, would, would ask some of these questions about have, have these companies done anything to be inclusive with minorities and African-Americans. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Alderman. And is, is Alderman Vasquez on the line as well? If not, Ashley, feel free to go through your witnesses and if, if Alderman Vasquez appears, you can hop through them at any time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first witness I would, I would have is Mr. Brian Zeisis, he's with me here today.
Good morning, Board, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations on your appointment.
Thank you. Brian, thanks. So if you could just give your, your name, address, and I'll swear you in.
My name is Brian Zeisis. I live at 5111 North Walcott in Chicago.
Thank you. Do you swear to tell the whole, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
I do, thank you.
And Brian, you heard the chairman's request about the different areas and topics.
Yes, I did.
Okay. Brian, if you could state your name and, and address for the record.
Brian's, I just did, Brian Zeisis. Can we pull up the flow chart? I believe that it's yeah, this one is perfect.
Let's, let's start with the chairman's direct issues and then we can get into, to the actual testimony.
Great. Mr. Chairman, so I, and members of the board, I believe the first question was how customers will be approaching the facility and flowing through the facility. And so our architect, who you'll hear from later, Jamie, provides this flow chart of direction and it's color-coded as well. We have one means of ingress and one means of egress, and there's no doubling back. So people will, our customers will enter the facility in the easternmost door on Randolph. When they get in, when they enter the facility, we will have a private security guard there as well as an agent of the dispensary behind the reception desk. This area is our public access, anyone can access this area. It is in this area where our agent will check IDs with a scanner to ensure that it is not a fake ID, as well as confirm that, that the customer is over 21. If the retail room, the limited-access area, as it's called in our jargon, is too full, we have a significant amount of waiting space in this area as well. Just as an aside, the protocols and responsibilities of the, of all of our agents, including the agent who's checking them in here, is to be able to recognize fake IDs and check people's, the, their credentials. And we are also a licensed responsible vendor trainer by IDFPR. So we provide training for other people as well as ourselves, but we, we make sure all of our agents go through this responsible vendor training. Once they've been confirmed who they are and their age, they will be allowed into the limited-access area, which is represented, starts by representing number two. And this, they've entered, it was a limited-access sales floor. Here, we will have products on display. We have fake products and we'll have merchandise and other things. They will flow to and, or be greeted by and taken with an agent who will be able to help them at one of our points of sale. We will have between five and seven points of sale, depending on the business flow as it is. They will pay at the circular, at the, at the, at the circular area in the lower, the southwest corner, where they will, where cash is transacted. I should mention, we have three ATMs at this location. Our ATMs are only 50 cents each for, no matter how much you take out. And we encourage people not to bring cash, but to use our, probably the cheapest ATMs in the city and just, and, and use the cash onsite. From here, they will go to what is, recognizes as number five, which is our checkout counter, where they will receive their product and then they will exit through a mantrap, six and seven onto Racine Street. And you can see by the flow of direction, they don't change, no one has to cross each other or double back, which makes it a very efficient design, safe design in terms of COVID. And we will also have a second security guard positioned in the five, four, five, six area to assist any customers who need help leaving, who want to be walked to their car for whatever purpose. And because we will have two licensed security guards, one really on the ingress on Randolph and one on the egress on Racine, they will also be monitoring the exterior of the building and, and, I don't know, I'll stop there.
I, I think that, that goes through the, the initial, how people flow in and out of the building and the facility. I think next, we'll walk everybody through the loading and unloading procedures.
Right. So one of the reasons why we were so excited about this building is because it does have a secure indoor garage for delivery. And this is a completely enclosed garage in the building. And we will be able to receive and our products through, in this enclosed garage. And we will be able to receive and our products in this enclosed garage, as well as cash pickups can take, will take place in this enclosed garage as well. The, when a delivery is coming, we are always notified in advance with a phone call. When a delivery truck or van from a cultivator arrives, they will, they will alert one of our staff, either the security guard who is outside, or the receptionist inside. We will then have a security guard unlock the garage with, and allow the car to pull in. The car will, the garage will close. We will check the identifications of the delivery or the cash pickup, make sure that they are who they say they are. Once that's confirmed, we will open up the door number two there in the dark blue, and we will receive the product into our restricted access area. The members of the board have, has heard the procedures that are required of dispensaries as they receive product many times. I don't want to belabor them, but let's just, suffice it to say, every product has to be confirmed, every item has to be confirmed. If we receive 1,500 gummies, we're going to count each one of those and confirm that it is sealed, that the manifest number and product ID number matches, that it is properly labeled. And if we count 1,499, we're going to recount them all again. So it requires a fair amount of space, and we're very lucky to have this, the footprint that we have here. And then once the product is counted, it is confirmed physically, manifests or signed by both parties. The delivery driver will get back in his car, we will close the door, and we will open the garage. I don't know, so that's loading and unloading.
All right. Next, if we could go through the security plan.
Okay, so the security plan, I think is better...
There should be a diagram.
Yes, better representation. This is a fine, yeah, these are two taken together. So, let me just, I think, let's start with the previous slide, if we could. Yeah, so this lists the proposed locations of our cameras. I think we have over 50 cameras contemplated at this location. At our current location, which is less than, it was about half the size of this, we do have 22 cameras. And so this is very, very robust camera process. All of these cameras will be able to take, will take continuous video 24/7, 365. That video will be visible in nighttime as well in daytime. It'll be accessible 24/7 for up to 90 days, for at least 90 days and longer if necessary. Well, the security plan also includes the video monitors that will allow for continuous review of these cameras while we're open by staff. The security plan also will make sure that, will have secure locks on every door that differentiates the public access from the limited access and the restricted access. All, the vault in the basement will be a wire mesh enforced vault that qualifies as a federal substance, level-two substance vault. Within that vault, we will also have an additional cash safe for the cash. The perimeter will also be benefit by adequate lighting. We will have glass break monitors. We will have motion sensors in several areas. We will have panic alarms at various locations. And we also will have a remote panic button that anyone in the exterior will be carrying with them, so that they have full panic.
And there is a second, the basement portion of this, which contains the vault.
Right. We can look at the basement portion in a, if... Yeah, so this is the basement portion. We are building out the northwest corner of the vault, right there. And then that will have the mesh-in-closed, secure, federal level-two security, as well as redundant alarm systems in there. On this floor, I should just also mention that we have staff bathrooms, several staff bathrooms, separate and distinct from the public bathrooms on the first floor.
And Mr. Chairman, we will be hearing from Mr. Saquon Golar, who is the authorized, licensed private security contractor.
Okay, great.
Community meeting. Okay, so...
So there were different levels of community engagement for this.
So I believe that we are, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I believe that we are the very first dispensary to come before you that had a license that also went through the city council rezoning process and zoning map change. I don't know that anyone has done that, and then with a current license. I know that people have done it in the hopes of licensing in the future. But once we went to the city's lottery held by your predecessor, we immediately, on Alderman Burnett's calendar, we met with Alderman Burnett in very early January, I believe it was January 6th. We told him our intention in the West Loop, and why we picked the West District with our lottery ball. And he directed us to several organizations. And that very same week, we met with the executive director of the West Central Association, Rod Birch, and we met with the executive director of the West Loop Community Organization, Carla Agustinelli. We also later, later that month, made a presentation to the Development Committee of the Neighbors of West Loop. So there were three different organizations. In late February, we presented ourselves to the West Central Association's Development Committee. And then on May 18th, the West Loop Community Organization held a Zoom Town Hall meeting that Alderman Burnett referred to, where a, where we had probably over 40 people in Zoom. That was held in conjunction with the West Loop Community Organization. At that meeting, as Alderman Burnett said, it was certainly the most robust attended. There was no opposition, and Alderman Burnett was kind enough to bring us forward to be rezoned the following day. And on that Wednesday, city council rezoned the building from C1 to DX3. Throughout the entire process, it was always very publicly known we were going to be a dispensary, and we were doing this only for the purpose of dispensary. Then, after that rezoning, we applied to the ZBA. We had a couple of fits and starts with meetings, because we, the, we had some meetings before the board had made clear its desires of how a community meeting should be held for the board. So there was, there were a couple of, a couple of community meetings that don't qualify or may not qualify. And then on July 21st, we held our three community meetings at the location in, which conform beyond a doubt to the ZBA's COVID directives. And at those meetings, no one showed up physically. We only had one person dial in on Zoom, and that is one of the witnesses for the opposition, the architect Gil Magnelli. So, but I feel as though the process was certainly in line with community standards and met with Alderman, and the Alderman is here as well.
So you also met with the Fulton, the Fulton Market Association.
So since then, we've had conversations, additional conversations with community group, with restaurant owners, with business owners, and with the Fulton Market Association. And I know that they, that they put in a letter as well.
And you received a letter of support from Alderman Vasquez.
Alderman Vasquez is right across the street from our current location. He's one of the, one of the Aldermen who are very, very concerned about cannabis in the city of Chicago, and I believe we have a letter from him as well.
And now, in addition to those community meetings, you have, you have an active participation and community engagement, both at the 5001 North Clark, and then intend to have an active and rigorous community engagement here at Randolph. Could you tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah, so our community engagement as a, look, I live walking distance from our current dispensary, and I can, I consider the dispensary a citizen of the community, and it has to be a responsible citizen, and, you know, not just for the neighborhood, but also for the whole city. So, you know, we, on the business side, we do what we can to support the business, our surrounding businesses. We recently launched what we calling, what we're calling the Puff Puff Passport, where we're allowing people who prove to take a passport, shop at eight local businesses that are locally owned, minority-owned, some of them minority-owned businesses. And if they get their stamp, passport stamped, they get 20% off of their purchase, which can be a significant savings. We also have launched the Waldo's Forever Fest, which obviously this year, the festival was online because of COVID. But last year was really the first festival, outdoor music festival of the Chicago's outdoor festival season, if you will. We had over 6,000 people in a cannabis, it was on 420. 420 is an iconic number for the cannabis community. We brought 6,000 people to the neighborhood. The businesses around were greatly supported. I do want to say that, I know that the board in previous meetings has heard numbers of traffic and things like that, and, you know, we do have a, we do have a fair ability to manage traffic quite well. Just on a typical weekend, we have over 800 people coming per day. We're able to see more than 90 to 95 people an hour, get them in and out and into the community to do additional shopping. I, as far as, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I just want to make sure we were talking about foot traffic.
Foot traffic, yes, right. There was a Tribune article where it quoted the bar, the bartender next door, who said he made $900 in tips one day for people, because that was, that was January 1, those.
And you've also received letters of support from, from local restaurants around the Randolph Street.
Yeah, I'm not sure which ones have, were able to get their letters in. I'm sure the board has them in the file.
Right. Mr. Chairman, I apologize, there was some confusion about how those should be submitted and when they would be submitted. So I know on Monday of this week, there were a few local restaurants going ahead and submitting letters of support. And I assume the board has the letters of support that were submitted timely.
I believe we do, I'm just confirming.
Thank you, sir. We'll go into the social equity portion, because I know that's important.
Before, if there's any, if there aren't any other questions about queue management, I just want to...
I do have a question too, but go on, Chairman.
No, 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 go ahead, Sam. I was going to say, I was going to say that I want to get through the witnesses and then do bulk questions at the end.
Oh, we can do it at the end, then.
Direct question.
It's fine with me. We can wait till the end. We can wait till the end.
I think it'll streamline things, just because often the answers to our questions get knocked out as the witnesses go.
So I wanted, I will just speak specifically to queue management, just for one minute, because we've learned a lot over the last nine months. The queue management on January 1 and 2 was not sufficient. And we've, and then with the pandemic, queue management had to change quite a bit again. But we are at a point now, with our operational expertise and our protocols, that we are able to keep safe distancing in a very, very safe manner and see, you know, as I said, over 800 people in a day and over 90 an hour, if necessary. We did go to a preorder system only, but we have backed off of that. Now it's preorder preferred, but you can walk up. We did have an Eventbrite managing system for picking time slots that was required to manage the flow on a... We have Eventbrite now preferred, but not required, because we are able to manage it. And we did have a texting app service tables ready for the queue outside. We still subscribe to that, and if it ever comes up, we have that as well. Our current location only has a waiting area safely that can seat six people. This waiting area at the current location can seat at least twice that. I think we have a COVID dot slide as well. And again, because of the design that Jamie has done, that is one direction straight through, if you do have a preorder, you're able to get in and out very, very quickly. So if you, if there are questions about queue management, obviously, we can talk about that in depth later.
And we'll take those questions later. I just want to keep it rolling along, and then do questions after everyone's presented.
We'll move into the social equity portion.
Okay, so social equity portion, you know, as I said, we, we... Well, first off, on the employee side, I think social equity on the employee side is an important thing for the city, and it's very important for us. Our employees are our number-one asset. They're at the front lines, and we want them to live stable, happy lives while they're with us. So we don't have a program or an initiative or anything like that that others have come before this board to talk about, because it's been very organic for us. We've been a majority of people, staff, that is qualifies as social equity under the statute from the beginning. We pay our staff what we hope is a good wage. Our average salary is over $40,000 a year now. We offer health, dental, vision, and we subsidize those. We also contribute to a retirement account for all full-time staff as well. Regardless of how much they contribute, we contribute 2%. We obviously have the paid sick leave that's required. Anybody who is a manager level and has gone to salary is given paid time off. We have a lot of job-protected programs, bereavement leave, blood drive, voting, jury duty, those types of things that I think were in there. But, you know, our staff on their own decided to do a community cleanup without any, without any impetus by ownership. And so they've done community cleanups in the surrounding area. You know, when, over the summer, we as an organization committed over $20,000, raised over $20,000 to the Chicago Community Bond Fund, and over $6,000 to other food drive and things like that. But actually, when, we felt as though our staff may want to do their own contributions. And so we've actually also included eight hours of pay at half the rate if people are volunteering at a 501(c)(3), as well as a match for staff to give funds on their own. And so that's not just the corporate, the owners that are giving. And so, and staff have actually taken a part of all of those programs, which has been fantastic, and really, you know, speaks to the type of people that were able to work. We've also, you know, tried to help raise awareness to the extent that we can. And we've given our social platform, which has like 20,000 followers on Instagram and others, we've given our platform to the head historian at the Dusable Heritage Foundation and Museum. And we try to be good citizens on every level. I don't know if that answers the...
Minority ownership?
We do have minority ownership, where, and women ownership are... The ownership is my wife, my brother, and our 20% partner, Paul.
Yeah. And then a series of below 5%.
Right, well, below 1%.
Below 1%, yes. And then there's, there's also your commitment to hiring contractors who qualify as MBE.
Yeah, so as a dispensary, we don't have too many subcontractors. The one major subcontractor we have is our security firm. Our security firm, as you'll see from Saquon Golar, and I'm sure he'll mention, is African-American minority-owned, and they are the one big contract that we have. Yeah, the, so, yeah, I'm good.
All right. Now, Mr. Chairman, normally we would go through his experience, the foundation, everything else. All the things are laid out in his rather extensive affidavit.
No need, let's, this was a good comprehensive kind of opening summary. So if you can just move along through the rest of your witnesses or experts, and just make sure that they're not being repetitive.
100%, I would just like to get his statement on the record for the affidavit and the findings of fact, if that's okay.
Yep, yep.
Brian, you were provided with a copy of the findings of fact and, and a prepared affidavit that you, you submitted, that were provided to the commission, I'm sorry, to the zoning board of, wait, hold on. You were provided with a copy of the findings of fact prior to this proceeding and provided, and provided an affidavit in support of the proposed findings of fact and the applications for special use. And if you were to continue with your testimony here today, would the testimony be consistent with those findings of fact and the affidavit?
Yes, they would.
All right. Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, I'd like to go to Mr. Ryan.
Yep, go right ahead.
All right. Joe, are you there?
I'm here.
Good to see you, Joe.
Pleasure. Nice to see you.
Okay, Mr. Ryan, really quick, I believe you're already sworn in from before, but I just would like to do it again as a precaution. So do you promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, for the sake of, of expediency, could I have, do I have Mr. Ryan recognized as an expert, given his prior testimonies?
Yeah, we recognize Mr. Ryan as an expert, based on his prior expertise today and in past meetings.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ryan, you were hired by the applicant in order to evaluate the subject's special use as well as the subject property and the surrounding area in order to ensure and define that the proposed operation and dispensary at the subject site meets all the standards and requirements for a special use under the Chicago zoning ordinance. Is that correct?
Yes.
And you prepared a report?
I did.
In preparing that report, did you have an opportunity to inspect the site and make evaluations?
I did.
And those observations are dictated and set forth in your report?
They are, yes.
And that report has been intended to this board prior to the hearing, correct?
It has been, yes.
Briefly, would you, could you summarize that report for the board?
Well, the property is located in the Fulton Market area. As you discussed previously, large foot traffic in the area. Mostly low-rise buildings, mostly commercial uses. There are some residential uses there, but primarily commercial office. It's in the former Meatpacking District that has been renovated over the last five, six years. The property has a good first floor location. It's a corner site, well-suited for the use. I examined each of the criteria for this board to grant a special use. And in my opinion, the property and the site meet all of the criteria for the board to grant a special use.
Thank you, sir. And if you were continuing to testify here today, you would testify consistent with your report?
I would.
You've also had a chance to review the proposed findings of fact submitted to the board?
I did.
And if you were to testify here today, you would testify consistent with those proposed findings of fact?
Yes, I would.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to Mr. Saquon Golar. I've got to get him here, sorry.
Morning, everyone. Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, let me get that mic for you.
Sorry about that, that's my watch. Morning, everyone.
Mr. Golar, could you please state your name, address for the record?
My name is Saquon Golar, 12915 South May, Kuytman Park, Illinois, 60827.
Great, and do you?
I apologize, I'm so sorry, this is the court reporter. Can you repeat that a little bit slower, please? Thank you.
Saquon Golar, 12915 South May Street, Kuytman Park, Illinois, 60827.
Great, great, thanks, Katie, and feel free whenever that comes up to just say something, so we get it all. All right, Mr. Golar, do you agree to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, sir.
Great.
Mr. Golar, you're the president of Rescue Aid Special Events and Training, Inc., is that correct?
Yes.
And Rescue Aid is a licensed private security contractor agency in the state of Illinois?
Yes.
Rescue Aid's held that licensure since 2017?
Yes.
In addition to holding the licensure as a private security contractor, are you also an emergency medical technician?
Yes.
Are you a certified firefighter?
Yes.
Are you employed as an arson investigator and a shift lieutenant for the Hometown Fire and Police Department?
Yes.
In Hometown, Illinois?
Yes.
Thank you. Have you held that position since 2003?
Yes.
You've also been employed as a patrol officer in Phoenix, Illinois, by the Phoenix, Illinois Police Department?
Yes.
You held that position from 2006 to 2012?
Yes.
You've also been a patrol officer with the South Suburban College Police Department in South Highland, Illinois?
Yes.
From 2012 to 2015?
Yes.
And you're an investigator, or have been employed as an investigator, with the Norfolk Southern Railroad?
Yes.
And you held that position from 2015 to 2018?
Yes.
Does Rescue Aid provide security services to cannabis dispensaries?
Yes.
Does Rescue Aid provide security services and planning services to cannabis dispensary applicants in the state of Illinois?
Yes.
Does it provide security services to pharmacies such as Walgreens?
Yes.
Does it provide security services to community organizations such as the Salvation Army and the Family Christian Center?
Yes.
And healthcare facilities such as Beloved Healthcare?
Yes.
And you provide security at major music festivals in the city of Chicago, including Music in the Park?
Yes.
Does it perform investigations and site planning and development?
Yes.
And it's qualified to provide instruction in multiple security-related activities like first responder baton training, handcuff instruction, first aid instruction, CPR instruction, Narcan instruction, armed and unarmed guard instruction, active shooter instruction, conceal and carry instruction, and hazmat instruction?
Yes.
And you've performed these services along with Rescue Aid staff, and you're responsible for the day-to-day operations of the business and instruction?
Correct.
And in addition to providing services for Gentle Ventures at the 5001 Clark Facility, you will be providing services to the Randolph Street facility?
Yes.
For Quaz LLC?
Yes.
Is Rescue Aid a minority-owned business?
Yes.
Now, is it safe to say that as a result of your work for Dispensary 33, the consulting work for dispensary applicants and your experiences in the security sector and as a police officer, as an EMT, that you're familiar with the state of Illinois regulations and security requirements for adult-use cannabis dispensary operations?
Yes.
Have you examined the subject site and facility?
Yes.
For the Randolph Street facility?
Yes.
And you helped in developing the security procedures and the security guard post orders for Dispensary 33?
Yes.
And the operations manual and security portions of the operations manual for Dispensary 33?
Yes.
And those were included as part of the proposed findings of fact?
Yes.
And you're familiar with the Dispensary 33 safety and security plans and protocols?
Yes.
And the employee safety procedures?
Yes.
It's your understanding that those proposed procedures will be strictly adhered to in this situation by Quaz LLC for the Randolph Street facility?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I have, I have the litany of his, of his testimony from the affidavit, and I'm happy to go through it and discuss all the security procedures. And how does security will be run?
No need, no need, we, we recognize Mr. Golar's expertise. If he just swears with testimony, we're good.
Then I, I can, I'm happy to rest on his affidavit, if I can.
Yep, let's do that.
Okay. Now, Mr. Golar, you were provided with a copy of the findings of fact prior to this proceeding, correct?
Correct.
And provided an affidavit in support of the proposed findings of fact?
Correct.
And this application for a special use?
Yes.
And if you were to continue with your testimony here today, would the testimony be consistent with those findings of fact and your, your affidavit?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, the, the next person I have is Ms. Magaliff, the architect.
Great, Ms. Magaliff, if you could please state your name and address, and I'll, I'll get you sworn in.
Jamie Magaliff, 311 Florence Avenue, Evanston, Illinois, 60202.
All right, thanks, Ms. Magaliff. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great, carry on.
Thank you.
Jamie, you're a licensed architect in the state of Illinois? I'm sorry, Ms. Magaliff, you're a licensed architect in the state of Illinois, correct?
Yes, I am.
And you're in charge of the proposed special uses designed for the proposed adult-use cannabis dispensary at 1152 West Randolph Street?
Yes, I am.
Your work as an architect, how many cannabis dispensaries have you designed?
Over 20.
How many retail stores have you designed?
Probably around 30.
Have you also designed commercial office spaces, pharmacies, urgent care facilities, daycare facilities, and multi-unit residential projects?
Yes.
As a result of your work, you've, you've designed projects and cannabis dispensaries here in the city of Chicago, correct?
I have, yes. Dispensary 33's current location in Andersonville.
And, and you also worked as a consultant in preparing applications and reviewing design and proposed designs for cannabis dispensary applicants in the recent round of cannabis dispensary applications with the state of Illinois?
Yes, for multiple companies.
As a result of your experience, you're familiar with the proposed facility's layout and the area in which the special use is to be located?
Yes, I am.
You went down to the site and reviewed it?
Yes.
You prepared the land use plan, the site plan, the landscape plan, the building elevations, the floor plans, including, included with the application for special use for which the, for which you submitted an affidavit as well?
Yes, I did.
Now, in reviewing the site, it was your conclusion that there was no school within 500 feet? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Property is presently zoned DX3?
That's correct.
In addition to being familiar with the Chicago zoning ordinance, you're also, as an architect, familiar with the Chicago Building Code and with the state of Illinois regulations for the operation of an adult-use cannabis dispensary?
Yes, I am.
Is it your opinion that, oh, sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have Ms. Magaliff's expertise recognized?
We recognize her expertise.
Thank you, sir. Jamie, is it, is it your opinion that the proposed facility complies with the applicable provisions of the Chicago zoning ordinance, the Chicago Building Code, as well as the state of Illinois regulations?
Yes, it does.
Now, just, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm going to go to the affidavit and the findings of fact, and we can move on. Jamie, you were provided with a copy of the proposed findings of fact prior to this proceeding, correct?
Correct, yes.
And, and you provided an affidavit in support of the proposed findings of fact and the application for special use?
Yes, I did.
And if you were to continue with your testimony here today, would the testimony be consistent with those findings of fact and the affidavit?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, assuming all these, these affidavits and the other exhibits we submitted with the findings of fact are admitted, I'm happy to move to questions and try and move this along.
Yep, let's do that. Let's move to questions. Ashley, I believe one of your other registered witnesses had hopped on at one point in time, Roger Romanelli.
He's just, he's just a supporter.
I, I believe, like Brian said, he's, he's a supporter.
I'm, I'm. Sorry about that. Yep, you're correct. So, um, let's, uh, let's move on to questions. Questions from the board.
Yeah, going back a little bit earlier, you said you were the one applicant that applied for rezoning in the city council. When was that?
I believe we went before the May 2020 city council.
May 2020, this past year?
Yeah, this year, this year in May, this past May.
Just was wondering when that was. All right, very good. Thank you. I was just, want to make sure I had that.
All right, any other questions from the board before we move to the objectors?
We, we had council meeting in May of '20? I mean, that was during the height of the pandemic.
We did. The, our, our community meeting on Zoom was held on Monday. I believe it was the 18th city council. The committee met on the 19th of Tuesday, and then the full city council on that Wednesday.
Okay. Actually, before we move to objectors, if there's any supporters present, or present, the registered supporters, let's take them now. Is Mr. Roger Romanelli on the line?
This is Roger Romanelli, can you hear me?
Yeah, Roger, thank you. Can you please state your name and address?
Sure, this is Roger Romanelli, Executive Director of the Fulton Market Association. Our office address is 917 West Washington Boulevard in Chicago.
Okay, great. And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in this proceeding?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I see that you're here to express support, so go right ahead.
Thank you very much. Our organization is a nonprofit economic development agency serving Chicago since 1996. For 15 years, we served as the official delegate agency for the Chicago Department of Planning and Development in our community, which is Fulton Market and West Loop. Today, on behalf of our local residents, businesses, and property owners, our association strongly supports Dispensary 33's proposal. This will have an extremely positive economic development impact, leasing a key commercial space that has been vacant for over 10 years. Dispensary 33 has conducted proper outreach to businesses and residents, and our association has received no letters of opposition. We salute Dispensary 33's proposed operations, maximum, maximum safety precautions and operations, enclosed, excuse me, enclosed garage for delivery area, full accommodations for people with disabilities, and ample space for customers. And when you factor in Dispensary 33's civic commitment to Chicago so far and its commitment to ownership diversity, their dispensary would be an excellent economic development achievement for our community. Now, beyond my comments about Dispensary 33, I must inform this board that the Chicago Buildings Department just issued a stop-work order at 1141 West Randolph across the street, where New Med is proposing another dispensary. In light of these unacceptable and shocking facts, our association and our community is asking this board to hold a new hearing on New Med's proposal with testimony from the Chicago Buildings Department. We must have law-abiding dispensary operators, and this week's action by the Buildings Department raises utmost serious concerns. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Romanelli. Unless Alderman Vasquez is on, we will move on to the objectors. Alderman Vasquez, is he there? Doesn't sound like it. So I'm going to say a few notes before we get to the objectors. All right, number one, control or restriction of competition is not a proper or lawful zoning objective. And number two, I will not be entertaining any arguments raised in your October 12, 2020 statement of objections regarding economic disclosure statements. I agree entirely with Mr. Brandt on this point. The applicant properly updated its economic disclosure statements as required by Section 2-154-020 of the city's municipal code. As such, there is no prejudice to you or anyone else with respect to the updated corporate structure of the applicant as properly disclosed in its economic disclosure statements. You were provided with the applicant's updated corporate structure on October 9, 2020, and as I stated in my ruling on that date, a week is ample time for, for preparation for this hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Minetz, are you, are you here?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
There you are. Okay, great. Mr. Minetz, can you state, state your name and address for reference, please?
Yes, Robert Minetz, M.I.N.E.T.Z., 55 West Monroe, Suite 1100, Chicago, Illinois, 60603.
Okay, great. And I understand you're, you're attorney for the objector.
For the objectors, 1141 West Randolph LLC and its manager, Ruchi Shah. That's who I represent.
All right, can you walk us through the objection?
Well, the first, first of all, I'd like to congratulate you on your recent appointment, and it's my, it's my pleasure to appear before this board today. I would, I'm pleased to walk through the objection. There's a number of different objections. You know, the first. You know, the first objection that you've already addressed, which is my objection based upon the change, late change in ownership, three days, three business days before the hearing. Uh, the remainder of the objection goes to the fact that the evidence does not support the five criteria for a special use. We will, uh, outline that through the testimony of the witnesses, and again, in my closing statement. Uh, I will also reference, uh, the previous testimony by one of the owners, Mr. Lee, who essentially told this board that, uh, a dispensary at this location is a bad idea. So I'd like to call one of their witnesses, and then I will call Mr. Gil McNelly, the architect, as my witness.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I, I don't mean to interrupt, and I do not have, I do not have any intent to, to do regular objections i- in any way, shape, or form, the way, the way some of, some of the prior hearings had occurred. I, I just want to make sure that, that the board understands we will be responding to these objections and raising our issues with, with what was just said at the end of Mr. Minetz's presentation.
Yep, sure, yeah, we'll go back to you for rebuttal, don't worry, and, uh, and, and Mr. Minetz, really quick, um, uh, your client, um, is he or she present?
No.
Okay, uh, who do you, who do you represent, will you, will you walk us through who you represent?
Yes, I represent 1141 West Randolph LLC and its manager, Ruchi Shah, as owners of the property at 1141 West Randolph Street, which is the property across the street from the sub-2 property.
Okay, um, Mr. Minetz, give us just one minute. Um, I, I do believe that your client needs to be present, um, for us to hear the objection. Are you able to get your client on the line?
I could try, if you would pass the case, but I do not believe that that is a requirement. I believe an objector's got a right to file an objection and call the witnesses who have knowledge of the relevant facts, and that's what we plan to do, do today.
Okay, um, we are reviewing the board rules, which I believe require, um, manager or someone representative of the client to be on the line, give us just, uh, give us just a brief moment, please.
I believe I am the representative of the, of the objector, Your Honor, or Mr. Chairman, sorry. I'm used to saying the word "Your Honor."
JJ, oh, sorry. If, if, if I could help short-circuit this, on page eight of the, uh, recently adopted January 26 Rules of Procedure, there is a note that says, in addition to all the requirements above, all persons that submit an affidavit or report as part of the application proposed, oh, that's the, I'm just going to stop that for a second. Um, I, I, sorry, Your Honor, I, my, I'm sorry, Chairman, I apologize.
You know, okay, so, um, yeah, on page nine, I'm seeing any person or entity may be represented by an attorney, but, but shall, but shall, like the applicant, be present at the hearing, so what we're going to do is, Mr. McNelly present, the other objector?
Mr. McNelly is, is my witness, correct?
I, I don't believe he's an objector, Mr. Chairman, I think he's.
He's also a representative of the objector.
All right, um, you know, I am going to call a five-minute recess right now because we need to get this right by the rules. Okay, so I'm going to motion just for a five-minute recess, Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
And I vote in the affirmative as well, so we will reconvene at exactly, uh, 12:56. Thank you.
Thank you.